This conference will now be recorded.
And this is the June 8th, 2022, meeting of the Minority Select Board. We just returned from executive session and it is 5:47 PM. So.
Can we meet with Donna now or do we have to wait?
Donna, we have you listed on the agenda for 6:00 PM. But is there any reason that we can't meet with you now in an open meeting?
No, you can, you can meet with me now. It's just if somebody shows up at 6:00 and we need to summarize everything we've done so far, we can do that. But it's not a public hearing. If it were a public hearing, you'd have to wait until the, the specified time.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, this is just kind of a suggestion, I guess. Okay. So, thank you for joining us. I guess this is the first time that we are meeting you with you as our town council in an open meeting. So congratulations. Well, thank you for helping us out.
Thank you for.
Let's start off with a contentious issue already.
No, it'll be fun. We'll have a good time.
We may have different definitions of fun, woman.
Possibly, Susan, possibly.
Um, so.
What is a walking tour or a listening?
A listening tour. So you expressed interest in doing a listening tour. And I guess the minority sharing that's meeting with a few people that you'd like to meet with and get a sense of what's going on in town. Is that true?
Yeah, yeah, it would just be if it's easier for people, I can, I can do it by Zoom or do it by phone or come out and spend a couple of hours meeting people. But it's really just going around and talking with the various department heads as well as you guys. But we can talk about what you guys have as priorities. But really to find out what the issues are that you've been dealing with for a while, what you think might be coming up, what you think you might need legal assistance with. And, and just generally just finding out how the, the town's culture is and how, what its usual way of operating is. So it'd be like talking to the, the chief assessor, talking to the town clerk, talking to the treasurer collector, talking with Melissa, talking with the two of you, talking with the head of the DPW, whatever may be going on. The building inspector, those kinds of things.
So should we be in touch via email about scheduling that?
Yeah.
Where do we schedule it now? Like what, whatever works for you?
Yeah, it probably makes sense if you can find a day when just about everybody is going to be in town hall or easily available to town hall. And then I'll drive out and can spend a few hours meeting with people. Take some notes.
Okay. And then you also mentioned potentially doing trainings. I imagine those would likely be via Zoom, whether that's open meeting law, public records law.
Yeah, we usually. I'm sorry, go ahead, Susan.
What other trainings do you offer?
Yeah, so the, the, there are four that we do a fair amount of, but we can come up with more if you have other interests. But open meeting law, public records act, ethics and sexual harassment and discrimination slash are, are the four topics that we usually do. I'm not certain, but you know, again, I'll, I can talk to you guys about it, but the sexual harassment law does require that the town have a policy and that policy be shared with all new employees as well as annually distributed to all employees. So if you haven't done that, you, you will probably want to do that and get on a schedule. Maybe sending it by email to everybody, the start of every fiscal year or something like that.
Okay.
If you don't have a policy, I can be sure to get you one.
Okay.
It would be great to, to give us one. I believe that there is something in the handbook. One of the things I think that's lacking in the current version of the handbook is that while it says these things are not allowed and says a little bit about what qualifies, there really aren't what I would call teeth. It isn't clear if you file such a harassment claim, what actually will happen.
Okay.
We do have a separate sexual harassment policy.
We do?
Yes.
Okay.
I can send it to Donna. She can look at it to see if it's.
Right, I don't know if I've ever, I don't know that I've ever seen it, but I believe you.
Yeah, that would be helpful, Melissa. I'm going to guess it's probably based on the MCAD model policy.
While you're here, would you be able to speak to other items on the agenda?
Sure.
If they're on the post agenda. So the Green and Hayfer bill that we, that I reached out to you about by email, I guess the board is looking for some guidance on to, as to how to move forward, whether we limit what we pay to $16,000 or we pay the full amount or negotiate an amount in between. I guess what is, so it sounds like you have a sense of what's going on. And Corinne Green called you yesterday. And I guess what advice do you have for the board on how to proceed with that?
Yeah, she did call me yesterday looking to get her bill paid. We talked a little bit. I think you've got good grounds from the emails that she knew that her budget was $16,000, that the town expected to have the work done for no more than $16,000. So if there is a, a decision made not to pay more than $16,000, that extra $5,000 plus that she is looking for was not appropriated. And she would not have a basis for suing for something that was not appropriated. However, we do have the option if the board would like to do this. You can, within this time period at the end of a fiscal year, move funds that were appropriated but not expended in this year. You can move them around and use them for other purposes. So you could take this amount of money, this $5,000 plus from other sources and use it to pay this bill. So that's a decision that the board has to make. And as we're talking, or, or I think as Justin, you and I were emailing back and forth about this, that the town may want to do that or consider some kind of negotiation with Corinne about that in order to preserve a relationship that might come in handy in the future.
What relationship do we, I, I would, given the job they did, I would hesitate to ever use them for anything. But are we just talking about like not sullying our name? Or do we foresee actually engaging them for other services?
I was thinking more as a witness in this matter.
Ah. What's your thought on that?
Um, my, my initial sense was that we hadn't set a hard enough limit at $16,000. But hearing from Donna that, you know, based on the communications, we had set a limit that, you know, could, could, could potentially hold up. I, you know, we don't want to, if, if we had set a limit and a service provider goes over the limit, we don't want to let people walk all over us, especially when we have without appropriated funds. On the other hand, it might be a small price to pay depending if, you know, it is someone that could, like Donna said, potentially serve as a witness in litigation.
Just out of curiosity, do you pay witnesses when you litigate if they agree to be a witness?
Typically not for factual witnesses. You will pay expert witnesses, whatever their fee is. But in this case, she would not be testifying as an expert witness.
Okay.
Hello, hello.
But I, I do think it would be good to make a decision sooner or later. She is calling. I know that based on their, based on our engagement letter, they had a, a interest fee, which I don't think has been charged yet. But we don't want any additional.
No.
Problems to pile along. It seems like we have the information that's available to us, all of the information that's available to us. And so do we pay up to the 16 and say we had set a hard limit and you went over it? Do we pay the full price or do we try to negotiate somewhere in the middle?
This is going to sound like an odd question, but given that report and how it was written, do we believe that should we need them as a witness, they will be a witness that will be beneficial to us?
That's an excellent question and I would say not.
On the other hand, we don't want them to be called by, as somebody else's witness and be angry at us for not paying them.
Although she can always be subpoenaed.
I mean, I'm, I'm inclined to say they extended beyond what, I mean, I'm reticent about paying them the extra money. I don't really foresee them being a desirable witness in this case. For us, like it's hard for me to see them supporting our case, given their performance on that report. But I could be completely wrong. I, I don't have enough experience in these matters to feel like I have any great certainty. I mean, I, I don't like having debts, but I also don't like people just expecting us to pay money that, that we were clear we weren't going to have.
It's a tricky one.
It is.
Um, if we don't pay, it sounds like Green can't sue the town.
No, well, I mean, anybody can sue, but she can't recover because the amount wasn't appropriated.
Gotcha.
I mean, I, I think it would require us writing them a letter saying that we believe we were clear that this was the entire amount appropriated and we don't have funds. For, you know, we expected that that was a cap and that you would not go beyond it. We can only pay you what was appropriate.
Would you feel comfortable writing a, a letter to that effect, Donna? On behalf of the town?
Yes, I can, yeah.
Okay. I think, I think that's probably the fair way to proceed, given that, you know, we made it clear that we were working on a, on a fixed budget. And when there was a request for additional funds, we met that request. And there was no request for further additional funds. In which case, should we also pay up to the $16,000 at the same time as we send that letter?
Yes.
Okay. So I would motion that we pay Green and Hayfer everything that we had allocated for that project. So up to the $16,000. And at the same time, that town council, Donna Brewer, reaches out on behalf of the town and explains that we are paying only up to the $16,000 because we thought that was a contractual agreement. And that's all the money that we have appropriated for that report.
Okay, was that seconded?
Go ahead.
Yes.
All right. And is there any further discussion? I'll call a vote, Susan?
Yes.
Justin, yes, the motion carries. So thank you for taking care of that, Donna.
I'll send, do you want me to send a draft of that letter to one of you to approve it before I send it out?
Sure, yeah, I, I could take a look if that works for you.
That'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you. The, the only other question, if we can have a couple more minutes from you is we're calling a special election for a third select board member.
Yep.
And we have on our agenda today, call special election for August 23rd from 12:00 PM to 7:00 PM. Is there anything else? I know that it sounds like there's a 64 day time limit for the 49 days and 15. So we're well in advance of that 64 day limit. Is there anything else that we need to do to call that election officially that you're aware of?
It kind of broke, it kind of broke up on you. So you're looking to have the election on November 8th?
On August 23rd.
Oh, August 23rd, yeah. So I, I'd have to work backwards to make sure that you, but it, it sounds like you should have plenty of time. So.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did this for another one of our towns, working backwards, what the timeframe would be.
And so we're well, we're well over 64 days. But.
Yeah.
I guess my question is, is there anything we need to do, like post a notice somewhere or?
Do we have requirements for how we have to advertise the election or inform the public? Or what is, how does one go forward to let the public know about a special election?
Yeah, so you, you'll, you'll vote to call the election for a specific day. And then you have to post the warrant for the election.
Okay.
And that, but go ahead, sorry.
Sorry to interrupt, but can I work with you on that, on drafting the warrant for that election?
Yep.
Does it get mailed to all residents?
So there's no requirement in the law that the warrant ever be mailed to all the residents. But oftentimes that is the practice of the community to, all you need to do is post it in every precinct. And I imagine you only have one precinct. So the constable would post it in your usual place, probably the bulletin board in town hall in, and let people know. But if it's your practice to send the warrant to everybody, then you'd send it to everybody. But it's not a requirement of law.
I, I believe it is even a town bylaw that we have to, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, we can take a look at your bylaws for that, whether it's for town meeting or for the election. Or any moment.
Okay.
Let me just pull it up for you so you can.
So we will post a warrant similar to one that would call a town meeting, but we would call the election. But I imagine that if the requirement is seven days for annual and 14 days for a special, it's not 64 days for a special election, is it? That's, that we could do that much closer to the election.
Right, exactly. That's, that's the deadline for calling the election, not for posting the warrant.
Got you.
So our bylaw is, sorry, is to mail the warrants for all annual and special town meetings to all registered voter households. So it's not for elections.
So it's not for elections? I just hate to see court turnout because people don't know it's going to happen.
Well, there's no reason we can't mail it if we want to. Okay, so we, we have, essentially we could call the election and vote on it tonight. And then all the other people like the clerk and the caucuses could do their work. But we don't need to sign the warrant until closer.
Yeah, you actually couldn't do the warrant now because we don't know who the candidates are.
That's a ballot, not a warrant. We don't put the candidates on our warrants. We just put the position.
No. For an election, you oftentimes will have a sample ballot.
Okay.
For, with the warrant for the election. I, I don't know if you do that for your annual elections, but that's a common thing to do.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. That's, that's all of the business that I had with you this evening. Thank you for joining us. Susan, do you have anything else?
No, only that I would like to have a conversation with Donna about some concerns I have on how we're going to successfully oversee the court.
Yeah.
Between now and when she has her annual review, which the person's only starting on July 5th. I can't imagine that proceeding until at least August.
Yeah, so I think that would be good for you to do.
And can I have permission to contact her about the issue I said today about the executive session minutes and the attachments to get clarification from her? Because I don't think a lot of those should be.
Yeah, so there are some questions about redaction, redacting documents related to executive session meetings and, and investigation documents. So the town administrator will reach out to you on that as well. Is that fine? That's good?
Yeah, that's fine.
As long as that's good with you, Susan?
It's fine with me.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. All right, I'll talk to you guys soon. Take care.
Yeah. Have a good evening. Bye bye.
Yeah, you too.
We can turn the lights back on in a little bit. I need, it's getting dark in there. That old adjam comes in across. When we started, it was bright and out with the summer sun that like you couldn't see the person on the screen at all. It's not so bad now.
Okay. So we have tackled a few items of old business. We've already done old business number two. I made a motion that passed about Donna's going to write a letter. And Melissa, you can take care of the payment up to $16,000?
Yep.
Thank you. I guess let's formally motion and vote. So I would motion that we call a special election to fill one vacant select board seat for the remainder of its term, which will be through town meeting 2023, the Tuesday after town meeting in May of 2023. And that election, that's, that's the select board seat will be filled until then. And that election will happen on August 23rd from 12:00 PM to 7:00 PM.
Seconded.
We have a seconded motion to call that special election to fill the vacant select board seat. Is there any discussion? Any public input?
Think we talked through this one and it gives us enough days and we think we should have it. So let's do it.
All right. Susan?
Yes.
Justin, yes, the motion carries and the special election is called. Old business number three, mediation prices. So I was talking to Bob and Bob Sekulov of Quada Mediation. And he mentioned that he forgot to include in his price list $100 per session for travel for two people and gas and such. So I believe we had allocated $450 for two sessions. And he requested $650 for two sessions. And when I was thinking about it with the price of gas and two people coming out here, maybe they could carpool, but.
I was assuming they were carpooling, but maybe that's a bad assumption.
He said he talked to his board and that the price for two sessions is actually $650.
I think it's a really good idea for you guys to get it.
Yeah.
So I'm all, I'm like in for a penny, in for a pound. I think that if that's what it's going to take to do it, we should do it.
Yeah.
Maybe you'll find one session will do the job and we won't need the full amount.
Yeah.
I, I would say that I'm in support of you guys doing that.
Yeah.
So let's do it.
So I would just motion that I can tell Bob Sekulov of Quada Mediation that we have allocated $650 for the purpose of two sessions and an increase from $450.
Right, seconded.
Seconded, any further discussion, input? Call a vote, Susan?
Yes.
Justin, yes, motion carries.
Can I open the window? Please, thanks.
Okay, so new business number four, and I pictured this happening after we had discussed our requests from Lori Shaw and Sean Tryon.
Okay.
But it actually is better to probably have.
Beforehand, right.
So I believe you were at some of the meetings, if not all of them, last session of the select board, where we discussed the American Rescue Plan Act funds.
And I've now actually read the KP document and the, um, the excerpts concerning the finance, me, this conversation with KP about specific requests that had been put on the warrant as well. So I feel like I had some command of what ARPA actually would allow us to pay for.
Yeah.
Although I would say that I feel very confident about that.
Yeah, I mean, initially when it came out, people were of the understanding, and I think you probably got this sense, but people were of the understanding, there were very limited uses, right? There were 10 uses or whatever there were. And then the state said that we could declare up to $10 million in lost revenue by default and spend it on general government services.
Which is particularly amusing because I can't imagine we would have ever had $10 million worth of revenue, never mind lost revenue, but okay, I take it.
Right, if you took, I mean, if you took all of the revenue of the last two or three years.
Right.
$10 million.
Exactly.
And you'll notice actually building fees went up quite a bit during COVID.
Oh, my goodness.
So.
And still are up because of the price of stuff.
Yeah, and the, and I mean, in particular, the fees that the building inspector, like this was collecting.
Right.
So we may have gained revenue, but nonetheless, we have some flexibility to spend it on general government services. We could also try and align it with some of the other goals of the program. Even if we claim lost revenue and we're spending on general government services, we could relate it to the pandemic or recovery from the pandemic in some ways, which I think a number of these requests, what do you think? Probably all of these requests get at the pandemic in some way, whether it's medical vehicles or outdoor recreational spaces. So to my, to my knowledge, some of the things guiding us on how to spend the ARPA funds are a survey that we put out last, when the funds first became available. And then we've received four particularly, particular requests, three from town departments and one from Southern Berkshire Ambulance.
Right.
Southern Berkshire Ambulance wants in the neighborhood of, I believe it's $17,000 towards a new ambulance. I believe they asked seven towns once, was it seven towns? Five or seven towns?
Five, I believe.
Five towns. And I think all of the other towns have committed to their share.
Except, except Washington.
Except by Washington, who has returned their ARPA funds to the state.
Interesting. Was there reasoning behind that?
I don't, I'm not sure. It was the ambulance that actually informed me of that.
We don't need your money.
Because they're not Washington.
There you go.
So I think, and now the, it sounds like Southern Berkshire Ambulance has changed.
Leadership.
Leadership once again, but it sounded like they were writing, they, they were headed in the right direction, getting audited, financial audit, trying to get back some of their unpaid bills. They had a very low rate. And so anyways, that's a, that's a chunk of, of funds. The playground, Tom Menzie of the Parks Commission came in at one point to present on the playground. And that's a flexible request because we could do anything from renovate it and put new mulch and maybe put new equipment to a complete overhaul, which could be up to, I think it was in the neighborhood of $90,000.
I, I'm reticent to do anything or even comment on that possibility until after we get that, you know, Scott is out to look at the site and check to make sure that it passes Title V.
Yeah.
I have pretty significant, I, I love the idea of a playground. I hate the idea of a playground on top of that leach field that's right next to the river.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I, you know, there's no way we could ever build that septic now under current laws. And before it gets tested and we're clear that it's even a safe site, I, I, I don't feel like I can even discuss whether having playground equipment on top of it is acceptable.
Yeah. And so is there, is there a timeline on the Title V inspection?
They're coming on Wednesday to do it. And we should have results, I would think, within a week at least.
So maybe two weeks from now?
Yeah. So I, I mean, that could, you know, and maybe if it needs to be redone immediately, which it doesn't sound like that's the case, but if that was the case, maybe it would be, rolls into, right?
He was here today and didn't note that from his research, that this septic is 30 years old?
Okay, so I guess we'll have to see.
It did have an update, I guess, on it.
I, I kind of feel like what I would like to recommend to them as a. I, I kind of feel like what I would like to recommend to them as of now is to ponder where that might be cited if it wasn't there. Like, let's just suggest they start thinking about a backup plan.
Okay.
So that if that whole thing has to be removed to redo the septic, where do we want to put it?
Yeah.
Do we want to put it back there or do we want to use this as an opportunity to rebuild it somewhere? That's not on top of the set.
Yeah. So why don't we hold off until we have the results back from the Title V, I guess?
Okay.
And then we have the other two departmental requests coming in this evening, so I won't really go into that.
Okay.
We'll get into that. But anyways, that's kind of an overview. I think you are aware of almost all of that, if not all of it, but I think we should probably put this on old business for the next meeting.
The playground or the concept?
Well, sorry, the funds. As it's currently on the website, we agreed to accepting applications on a rolling basis.
Right.
Right, so we review them as they come in.
Okay.
But, and we can do that, right? It's discretionary to the select board how to spend these funds. I think other options would include setting a deadline for, you know, all requests must be in now. We're going to allocate the funds after that or setting two deadlines. We're going to allocate half after this date. And then next year, you know, because we have a few years, we have until twenty twenty-four to allocate the funds in twenty twenty-six to actually spend, I believe.
Do we know if any of the current things before us concerning the ARPA fund requests have a timeline associated with them?
Yes, so two of them do. The ambulance squad is looking for theirs within the next two weeks because they are purchasing new ambulances and need that money to, for the down payment. And Sean's request for the, to replace Rescue Five is part of that. They would be selling us their trade-in. So they also, that would also be within the next two weeks or so.
Okay. I did a quick calculation and I think the ambulance is like slightly, somewhere around seven percent, but a little less of the total amount of the ARPA funds that we would have, seventeen plus. And given that the other towns are on it, I'm inclined to say we should do it. We rely on that ambulance service. Their equipment is in a poly shape and it does seem like they're taking steps in the direction to really get their house in order, for lack of a better way to put it. I, I'm inclined to say we should go ahead and invest in that equipment.
Yeah, I think I'm, I'm also similarly, you know, I think it's a good, good request. Let me look up the.
I can get, I just pulled it up. And there's six towns total, but obviously with the.
Right.
Monterey is seventeen thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine.
Do we actually have that money in hand? How does that work?
We have half of the two seventy-six, one ninety.
Okay.
So I, I pretty much, I think I would be open to putting that on next week's agenda. I saw the audit, but I couldn't open the.
Did you get the second one that I sent you? Because I downloaded it and sent it.
Okay, then either I.
I'll reset.
Was it reset?
Can you send you the audit too?
Yeah. Or you didn't get it either?
I didn't.
I went to enter the password and, oh, it sent, it sent the password to you. That's what happened.
So I ended up downloading it.
Is that the same thing that?
Yeah.
I got the password.
I downloaded it and then I emailed the two guys that I emailed again.
Okay.
Okay, and I think, you know, assuming that it's a good all right. Oh, I see Michelle Miller has her hand up. Michelle, I'm calling on you.
Good evening. Thank you for recognizing me. I'm here to comment on what the process might be for these ARPA funds, which are suddenly front and center. As a chair of the finance committee, we have not had an opportunity to discuss or weigh in on what we feel should be the priorities, which although, as you state, Justin, we have no standing in the legal sense, we certainly have an important responsibility in regards to any monies that the town wishes to spend, especially as it might relate to the capital plan, which we are just beginning to examine. I think it would be really, really important for the board to set out a very clear process going forward, as I think, although at this time I think there are only two formal proposals. I understand that there are a number of people or groups that have thought that the ARPA funds might be directed towards their projects or goals, which I think the important thing is that everybody have an opportunity to make a presentation and that the presentation should be very rigorous. It's not very often that we get two hundred and forty thousand dollars to spend as a town. I, I know that the finance committee will be discussing this, this coming Tuesday. And we also are anticipating a meeting, a joint meeting with the select board to discuss a number of issues as you emailed me just, just today and which I did respond to, although I don't know if everyone received my answer.
I have not, I have not had a chance to look at that, just by the way.
And I, I have not seen it as of when I left for the meeting today.
Okay, well, there's no, there's no rush because we can deal with whatever that was, but I just wanted to say that I feel very strongly that the finance committee should be involved in any discussions and vetting of any proposals that, that will involve the spending of funds in the town. And I will close.
Can I ask, Michelle?
Yeah.
Okay, Michelle.
Could I ask then that that joint meeting is next Thursday, a week from Thursday, I believe?
No, actually, if you had gotten my email, you would have seen that although we had anticipated scheduling it for next Thursday, that Melissa had made the point that she would not be available at that time. And I think it would be foolish of us to have a joint meeting where she wasn't there to answer our questions. So we could either defer it for a week, as she suggested, or perhaps have it on the Tuesday, the twenty-first, I believe would be the right date, which would be the next time that the finance committee might meet, since we like to meet on Tuesdays.
I, I'm okay with either of those dates, but what I was going to suggest was that at the very least, the Southern Berkshire Ambulance proposal and the fire chief's proposal concerning the medical rescue vehicle be considered at that meeting because they're time sensitive.
Yeah, I understand that. We were talking two weeks as a timeline. I unfortunately am just a little bit out of the loop right now as I have been away, but I'm going to bring myself up to speed on that proposal and we will certainly discuss it on Tuesday at our meeting so that we can make any recommendations that we feel are helpful.
So should we make this, can we, can we crash your Tuesday meeting and, and join you and discuss this on Tuesday?
Let's see, crash, that's a tough word.
Sorry, I meant, I meant, I meant joint meeting, I meant joint meeting.
I, let's see, today's Wednesday.
And we could save all the other financial policies and budget calendar and we could just focus on American Rescue Plan Act funds.
And then we'd be out of there and let you go on with your business?
Okay, let's say that we will have some of our meeting first. And then maybe join, the select board can join because there are a couple of items that I feel are important for the finance committee to deal with. Is that if we perhaps can schedule our meeting and you could join us at the seven o'clock hour, would that be all right?
By me?
I believe that.
So that, and that would be the fourteenth, right?
Correct.
Unless, based on the forty-eight hour, you know, advance, we could still do Friday at seven P M.
I'm, I'm just not around.
I know, it was a joke. All right.
Michelle, can you stay on until after, at six forty-five, the fire chief is supposed to be here to talk about his proposal? Are you able to stay tonight to hear that?
Yes, I would like to, I would like to hear both people who are scheduled to speak. The representative.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm, until that's done.
Michelle, I never really spoke to your initial point, but I think it, yeah, let's meet and the finance committee can offer an advisory opinion on how to spend spend ARPA funds.
I think, once again, I think the idea of our joint meeting would be preliminary that we might address the issue that's time sensitive, such as the fire company requests. But I think beyond that, we should be not entertaining any proposals that, until all proposals are on the table, so that anyone any group or body in the town that wants to submit a request would have to have it by a certain time with cer, within certain parameters.
So, and just to speak to that point, we have received four proposed, four formal proposals, three from town departments, one from Southern Berkshire Ambulance. We've had it listed in the meeting minutes for a few months at least, and we posted it to the website that we're accepting applications on a rolling basis. Maybe what you're getting at is us setting a deadline, which is something that I think we're entertaining.
Anyway, I think it's a good idea, even if we, even if we say that that's the deadline for the first X, your first half of the funds and that we'll have a deadline for the second half in the future. People didn't prepare for that.
But I just want to say that that precludes since I'm not aware of all the proposals that you mentioned, I'm only aware of the two that are on tonight's agenda.
There's actually three on tonight's agenda?
So additionally, additionally, Michelle, the park commission, a representative of the park commission presented on renovating or redoing the playground. And the other one that's not on tonight's agenda is Southern Berkshire Ambulance, just to fill you in.
Okay. I think I've said all that I can really say. I don't want to take up any more of your time and I will defer to you to a meeting that I'll post for us to meet jointly on Tuesday.
Yes, we'll meet jointly on Tuesday.
I'll mute myself and wait for, to hear what other people have to say.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. See you soon. And I see Peter has his hand up. And right after that, we're going to jump right into the six-thirty meeting with the community center committee chair. Peter, do you have a comment? Peter Merkapp? Peter's muted.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Peter.
Okay, I just, as in my role as chair of the Renewable Energy Working Group, if there's a possibility of using ARPA funds for our efforts to install solar panels associated with town buildings, we would, we would want to make that known to the select board and the finance committee. It's, it's certainly comes under the heading of a long-range planning for the town. And we have been looking for various ways or looking at various sources of funding to hire a consultant to help provide a feasibility study for solar panels associated with town buildings. And so if those funds could be used for that purpose, we would want to have a chance at accessing those funds. That's all. I just want to make sure that the selects and the finance committee are aware that the Renewable Energy Working Group needs funds to, to, to do our work and would like to be considered. That's all.
Thank you, Peter. We do have a meeting in, in, two minutes ago, but speaking about the Renewable Energy Working Group, would, would you be interested, I know your group's been working for a little bit over half a year, I think, would you be interested in a, in a joint meeting to touch base with the slide board on the work that's that you've done so far or maybe a, just a correspondence in between, just to update the slide board on where, where your group, what your group has done and where it's headed? Because I know you've been holding meetings and, and moving along.
Sure, I'd be glad to do that. If, if the select board would like to schedule that meeting, the Renewable Energy Working Group would be glad to attend.
Okay, thank you very much. I will be in touch with you about that.
Good plan.
Okay.
Okay, and on the next agenda item, we're welcoming Lori Shaw, Community Center Committee Chair, to discuss the Community Center Committee's request for ARPA funds for the construction of a, of a pavilion at the community center site.
Do you want me up there or hopping from here?
You're welcome to just join us.
Okay, come here.
Come on down.
To the prices line.
Okay.
To the ARPA's rate? No, it doesn't.
Thank you.
Oh, you have first.
Yeah. Do I need help? No, I'm okay.
Want me up there too?
Sure. Why not? Okay. It's still typical of the larger. So as you know, I've sent you a letter on May eighteenth asking for approximately eighty-five thousand dollars to construct a pavilion on the Monterey Community Center property. The community center has just become a hub of activity. It provides so many opportunities for people to get together, to exercise, to socialize, to learn new things. And the, the last year that we were fully open was two thousand nineteen. And in that year, we had five hundred and thirty-two people visiting the community center. The building was closed during the pandemic, but in order to make some purposes available for, for people in the community, we erected a tent so that people could be outside to exercise. We had Tai Chi classes, yoga classes, ping pong, crafts, different things like that, in order to help people maintain their physical and mental health. This is the third year that we've put up the tent and we're quickly realizing that that is not a sustainable thing to do every year. It's gotten more and more expensive, it's time limited. And I, in my letter, I enumerated all of the reasons why we felt that the tent was not a good option. And so we started researching pavilions. So we contacted three local contractors who could not do that work. I think Wendy is still in some discussions with a fourth contractor. We contacted five companies, some of which were eliminated because they didn't have the right sizes or they, they wouldn't do municipal projects. And so in the handout that I've given you is a preliminary, two preliminary quotes, that not anything set in stone at all, but just based on what we are hoping to achieve. And that is up for, you know, changes if, if we can't achieve what we want. But basically, we're looking for a twenty foot by forty foot pavilion that roughly eight hundred square feet, set upon a concrete pad and made ready for electricity. The health issues are the main motivation behind asking for this amount of money, which I realize is a large amount. which I realize is a large amount of money. But we have realized the hard way that social isolation is not good for anybody. And we would like to provide ongoing opportunities for people to be able to be outside and to be able to engage in activities and engage with each other in a safe way, especially given the age of most of our citizens in Monterey. So this doesn't exactly, that our, our motivation, being a health issue, does not necessarily fit into the criteria for the ARPA funds. It is, in a broad sense, it does. But in the, in the letter that I had read from the, from Steve Weiss to Brian Riley, both of whom are no longer in the picture, it appeared that attorney Riley said that this, the community center could be funded under the heading of governmental services funded by ARPA to replace lost revenue and suggested that all of these little projects, if they, if that was all done under lost revenue, then we would have the ability to, to do this. So this proposal is a logical response to the epidemic. And it appears that this is going to be with us for a while. It is a very wily virus that mutates and propagates. And while hopefully the worst of it is behind us, there are still going to be concerns about this for a while to come. And we would really like to be able to provide opportunities for people to get together in a safe way. So we see this as a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. You know, this money is not coming out of our taxpayers' wallets. We hope to build a structure that will last for many, many years, long after the worst of COVID is behind us. And I think that it also is a permanent reminder of what we did with this money. We were given this money to respond to the COVID pandemic, and we will have a permanent structure that says this was our priority. Our priority was for the health and physical well-being of the people in our town. And it will also help them to resume normal lifestyles and will provide many, many years of use. So I don't know if either of you two would like to add anything?
I guess I'm amazed at how many people are still really afraid to go out and see their best friend or their niece, nephew, you know, college roommate, because they're so worried about getting the virus indoors. And many of us have ventured out, and here we are, indoors. But there's still a lot of people in Monterey, it just, they're not getting out, they're just staying in their homes. But I think this would give them a reason to come out where they know, oh, I can see my friends, you know, who I used to socialize with, because that will be a safe place. And if it starts to rain, there's a roof there. And if I need to go to the bathroom, I can go inside, et cetera. So it also will, for many months, double the space that we actually have. So inside, we have six hundred twenty-eight square feet, plus the dance area and the bathroom and kitchenette.
What, how many people could you realistically fit in the twenty-by-forty pavilion? Like, I, I have no idea how many people that.
Well, our capacity.
You've got a person presenting and.
Right. Our capacity for the community center, which is smaller, is forty-nine.
Okay.
So.
Presumably larger than that.
Exactly. Exactly.
Or by, so you're six forty-nine inside and the.
Six twenty-eight plus the little kitchenette and the little.
But in that main part, it's six twenty-eight. So this would be eight hundred, so you're going to figure.
It'd be sixty people, something like that.
And in general, do you guys have any numbers of what kind of attendance that have been to the stuff that you've been doing under the tent?
Oh, yeah, I mean, we, I wish I brought the attendance book with me.
Yes, every event in the community center is logged so that we know for every single event how many people attended. So it's, again, the figures, because of the pandemic, we, we have.
And I'm sure it's very variable.
It is.
It is.
It's never the same, and the same thing runs twice.
Between five and twenty usually. And we, I think last summer, we might have gotten more for certain events, and now I can't name them off the top of my head.
Oh, that one that, that we had the people from the general store come and talk.
Oh, right.
That was mob.
Yeah.
Everybody wanted to hear about that one. So, so, yeah, there is.
Would it be possible to put, like, I could come look at the log, but for our records, could you put something together about, let's go for last summer, since you have wallowed last summer? What kind of attendance, just because, like, if we're going to put forward that we want to spend eighty grand on something, we should have some sense of how many people are regularly using it?
And just remember that last summer, definitely Wendy Johnson was keeping the notes from what I would tell her about who was at Al-Anon and who was at Tai Chi and who was at this, that, and the other. So she would put that in the records in our, in the minutes.
Right.
But what you need to know is we, some of the groups were specifically limited. Like Tai Chi said, wow, we could have more people on the edge, but we had some people that were nervous that were only coming out to Tai Chi, and they said, I really hope we don't have more than twelve or whatever. So we.
So it just.
It wasn't a normal year.
Well, that's fine, but just note, like, cap that.
Yeah.
So if you had twenty people, you're capped at twenty. If you had ten people, you're capped at ten. Obviously, you couldn't have packed more than that. And given what was going on last year, I'm not going to blame anyone for capping anything.
Yeah.
She says, wearing a mask. So, and parking. If you were getting eighty people, do you have parking for eighty people?
I think eighty is a little ambitious.
Okay.
Well, it depends on how many cars they come.
Well, that's true. That's true. I guess we have to encourage parking. But.
Her house family brings seven, and other people are coming with one or two, and some people are walking or bike riding.
But that's not generally the size of the event that we have.
Yeah.
So it's usually smaller, even though that would be the capacity. I mean, I remember when we had the pumpkin roll.
Right.
Yeah.
The, there was like, we used, you guys had parking down that hill. That were fine.
Yes.
I mean, you couldn't do it if it was wet, obviously, but.
That just reflects what's happening. That, that reflects new events and some other events, and you're not all the events, but. You can see that there's a variety of events.
I already knew that, but yes, I can. I think it would just be good to have some sense of the numbers, just that we can. I always like to see the best possible case made for anything.
So wouldn't you like to see them from twenty nineteen as well?
Sure. If you want more work, you do it. Give me all the numbers.
Well, because that's when it was up and running, really.
Right.
Not, not really, I was not with the tents.
But at least the inside one, sure.
Right.
Absolutely.
Right.
That was pre-fear, so let's, let's do that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Give me any numbers you want. I'll take them all.
Okay. So you even want numbers seventeen to eighteen inside? Okay, because we opened it.
Sure.
We can do that.
Yeah. I mean, just the more, you know, the better sense we have of what kind of usage it's getting, the better argument we can make, the, look, we were having all these people and then COVID. I mean, I, I, it's always nice to have an outdoor venue anyway, but.
So in the last year, we've been, in the last eighteen months, very flexible about who's going to be inside, who's going to be outside, who's on Zoom, who's hybrid. And so even then, some people, we had to bump and say, sorry, we can't, we can't have you right now because of the out.
And, you know, if we're, if we can document the significant decline of attendance because of COVID, which, how could that not have happened? That just makes the case stronger that it, you know.
And it would also give us the opportunity to increase usage because somebody could be having a meeting inside while a class is taking place outside. So we would really be able to, to use more of that.
So I have a, I have one question. So when you solicited, and ultimately, if such a project was completed, I believe it would have to follow procurement rules and go out to bid. But when you solicited these proposals, were the people writing the proposals aware of prevailing wage laws and it combines with prevailing wage?
The, the one from home, was it homes?
Structure.
Hometown structures. Was, was with prevailing wage. The one from Cloder Farm was not written with prevailing wage, but I spoke with the representative today, and he said that they are looking to do more type of municipal work and are working towards prevailing wage projects. So while they couldn't do that immediately, that is what they are looking, looking towards doing.
I also see on here, does it look like the eighty-six thousand estimate for the twenty-by-forty structure is not including electric and the slab that it's being built on?
That was not, but that eighty-six thousand erroneously has cedar, which is twenty thousand. And it has sonotubes, which we won't need, I guess, if we're doing that.
It's footings instead of the concrete pads.
So if you take out the sonotubes and you take out the cedar, you're taking out twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars, and then you then have to put back in the cement slab, which is about twenty and forty-two.
Well, this doesn't include any site prep or drainage or concrete work. But it's, but it sounds like we wouldn't miss. And I mean, ultimately, it would go out to bid, of course, but there's, so there's twenty thousand in erroneous cedar upgrade. Okay.
Which we kind of offset. Did you have something to say?
So if I'm not mistaken, Rebecca, did you have your hand up? Online there? Is she muted?
Oh, I did, but it's okay. Forget it.
Okay.
We do have, sorry to jump ahead of you, I just.
You're ready?
None. Okay.
So what is the timeline for these projects and the?
That's a million-dollar question. We're come, we're working on coming up with, it sounds like from speaking with the finance committee as, you know, ultimately, the slideboard decides how to spend ARPA funds. But in speaking with the finance committee chair, they're looking for, you know, to provide an advisory opinion, and the, the other requesting departments also want a sense of when the slideboard's going to make a decision. So I think we're going to hopefully come up with a timeline next week. We've kind of been accepting proposals on a rolling basis thus far, but we haven't awarded any money yet. And we are working on dealing with proposals as they come in and probably setting a deadline for when we will award all or half or whatever. Setting a timeline for that.
There was one thing I forgot to mention, it's just, you know, it had been suggested that we use a tent and continue to use a tent, like, try to get like a, either some kind of permanent tent or a tent that we put up and take down. And when you look at the weight of the snow and the force of the wind and you compare tents to this type of structure, it's really rapid and arduous. And both the places that we got the estimates from are able to tell us how much wind force they can take, and it's about a hundred forty miles per hour. And the tents can't handle that, so, you know. And the same thing with the weight of the snow.
You will have to convince me about the problems with tents since I ran a business in a tent for years. And, yeah. Enough said.
It also would look as nice. Or have a solid floor, because I imagine some activities, like cards, probably helps to have a level, solid floor.
Right.
And it's, they're, they're very, upkeep is really hard. The wind is a huge issue and storing, you know, combating mold and mildew and storing them over the winter.
Right.
It's a real project.
Yeah.
And if ping pong moves underneath the pavilion, they wear spots down. You know, if it were grass or some other surface, so.
And if somebody wanted to rent it out for an event, a small party or something like that, they wouldn't want tables covered in all different conditions.
Are you guys charging for any of the events?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. So what kind of events are chargeable?
If someone's making money at the event, if someone's, if someone lives in Monterey and they're just socializing, they don't have to pay anything, obviously. But if someone's making money, like the woman at the play is charging tickets, then she pays, and people that are going, if they're selling stuff, they would pay, so.
And people from out of town who want to rent it.
Yes, yeah, people from out of town who want to rent. So the, just before the pandemic, we were bringing in about two thousand, two hundred that year for the prior year we had. But so since then, we have some, we had to gas that lost revenue and came up with something like twenty-nine hundred because there were so many months.
Right.
But we couldn't have a lot of people.
Well, thank you for your presentation, and it's up to the slideboard now to come up with a timeline for allocating ARPA funds, and we're hoping to do that next week, I believe.
If we end up with hometown structures, if we get this opportunity, and we have hometown structures, he said it's warranty for years, it's warranty at least ten years. And then it would take, right now, even with funding supply chain, he said he could promise, if we know we're going to do this, that it would be done in six months, right about six months.
They don't do the pad, though. Someone else would have to do that.
They don't do the pad. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So will we hear by email or letter or, you know, whether or not we were approved or not? I mean, I think even without that.
I don't think we've gotten that far.
Okay.
Yeah.
But do you get me that, the number, so that we can put that into part of your proposal?
Okay.
We'll be, we'll be in touch. I'll let you know when.
Yeah, I mean, next week, I think we're even just hoping to set a timeline for ourselves and for everybody else. We had accepted, we've been accepting applications on a rolling basis, but there's a feeling amongst people, which I think is valid, that if we don't set a deadline, some people will think they still have timeline. So if we say, you know, August or October, whatever it may be.
Right.
Then we can accept what we, everything.
And then we'll be able to sort through in a fair way. So.
We're continuing our research as well, so.
Right. And, yeah, and so am I correct in understanding that should we agree to go forward with it, they would have to put it out for bid, even if it's to the same people?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. But it's worth getting the quotes to begin with.
Well, you could do, Melissa, would we have the option to either put out the bid or do an RFP?
Oh, well, an RFP would be for them to design the project. If we know what we want, it's going to have to be all as one piece, though, electrical, the, the base, the, for a general contractor to come in here, build it with the slab and do the electrical.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Sorry to keep you waiting, Mr. Brown.
Yeah, so we are a few minutes behind schedule, but thank you, Sean, for joining us to discuss the tire department's request for, specifically for a medical vehicle to replace Rescue Five, the Suburban, two thousand Chevy Suburban. And it's my understanding that Southern Berkshire's old ambulance might also factor into this equation at this point?
So, yes. Originally, I had just put the proposal together to go for a new vehicle like the police have, the Interceptor, it's on a state contract. But since then, since I've been in to speak to the board here, coincidentally, week and a half ago, two weeks ago, Southern Berkshire decided they're going to get rid of their medical fly car. I learned about that and reached out to them to see what they had, and it's a twenty-eighteen Ford Expedition. Wasn't put into service until late twenty nineteen. By the time it got, it was built and prepped and put into service, they have ninety-eight hundred miles on it at this point. So it's pretty much a brand-new vehicle still. Didn't fit into their scheme of how their operation worked. COVID kind of changed that, I think. People, different people change faces down there. So that is an option that definitely would like to pursue. What, what we're replacing is a two thousand one Chevy Suburban. We're would be replacing. Um, we would be replacing, um, currently twenty one years old. Um, coming up on a bunch of problems we're going to have to address after this current fiscal year.
What's the amount?
Um, fourteen thousand. Five of those have been put on in the last two years, um, with the shift program and, um, that whole thing getting rolling. Um, just a few things it needs right now is new tires, brakes, uh, brake lines, we already blew one brake line, fortunately it was. Going from the station to my house at a slow speed. Uh, the exhaust I noticed yesterday is start, is rotting and, um, you can see it from Route twenty three starting to hang down. There's a heat diverter issue in it, um. Definitely can drop five thousand dollars into it with a bat of an eye and without getting pricing, I would have to guess we're closer to ten thousand, eight thousand to ten thousand. And we're just need for some more light, uh, lights on it for responding to emergencies, you know, a few issues we've had. Not proper lighting on it. Originally that vehicle was never. Oh, I'll say this, it was bought for an emergency vehicle, but it wasn't built as an emergency vehicle, so it's. But me, you and the next person can go to the Chevy garage and pick up. And, um, so it doesn't have the, uh, updated equipment on it to run all the electronics, so. The battery dies, um, it doesn't start, it has, it has its issues, so. It plus as well. So some of the, the, uh. Uses that it does get, and it gets quite a bit, um, especially these days, call lines going up, as you know, Justin. Unfortunately, but, um, it carries additional EMS gear for us that responds with the other EMS vehicle. Um, typically has a chief officer in it, um, and then any other responders that, um, make that vehicle leaving the fire station. Chief gear from some more firefighting equipment so we get on scene quicker and, um, start, uh, initiating our. Our process of the scene, um. Extra radios, extra seating for responders. Use it for also large incident command scenes, we have two radios in it so we can talk to, on different channels to different groups of people. All at the same time, um, without having to change back and forth. This vehicle also, which our old vehicle has the same thing, is, uh, being able to transport. A patient in a new, in a unique situation, um, like ice storms, snowstorms, you can't get the ambulance up, but. Will take in this vehicle, load the patient and take it out to an awaiting ambulance for transport.
This would be the, the one you're looking at?
Yes, that, the one we have does do that, but not very well, this new one, this one that we're looking at has the full capabilities and. Proper licensing for that.
What else does it have that your current one does not?
Um, it has a command. Head desk.
Sorry, sorry, I knocked you off your stride.
It has a, a command structure in the back, it's basically, um, whiteboards, radios, um, storage for gear. Extinguishers, EMS stuff, um, it's, it's all wired so you can plug in electronics, has one ten capabilities back there. Uh, what else does it have? Lighting, extra lighting, um. That's in the rear, up front, it has all the, um. Proper mounting for the radios, um, such as laptops. And, um, command cabinet, that's, that was the word that I was looking for.
In the back?
In the back, yes, EMS command cabinet. Basically, it's just shelving and, um, storage area. So it's not in one big pile in the rear, the rear of the vehicle. What else? Guess that's, there's, they won't be supplying the radios, they're, what they have in it for radios are very high end, um. They're going to keep them for their next vehicles and applying them at all. Um, so they have two radios, we have two radios, we can swap out our vehicle.
Okay.
Um, not as nice, but that's okay. Uh, ba, 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 and there's a narcotics safe in there, which we wouldn't need, a couple other just very small items that we don't need. Uh, originally that vehicle was around eighty thousand dollars that they bought it for. They were asking fifty five thousand for it. To think is a pretty good deal for what it is, um.
What would a new vehicle comparable to the one you're using run?
Uh, it's basically, these two are comparable, so probably in that. I don't know with what inflation is right now, where things are going to end up, but I'd say in that seventy five, eighty five thousand probably. So.
So they're looking for fifty five thousand dollars cash?
Yes. They did give us, so we met with them last week, I think it was Thursday. We met with them, just trying to come up with some different options, ideas of how we could do this, make it work, because they'd really like it to see it go to use in a. More local towns where it's been, um, so. Couple of ideas we had discussed didn't work out, wasn't a, wasn't an option, so they. Ultimately, they're giving us a couple of weeks to make up our minds, because they do need the money to start putting towards their next capital purchases down there. They're stepping up to one brand new ambulance, I think it is, and one, then one. One new cabin chassis with an old ambulance body on it, so, um, to try to bolster their fleet responding.
We, we are meeting with the finance committees you heard earlier next Tuesday. Do you think between now and then, you could get some numbers on if you, if you had to replace your Chevy Suburban with a, a new vehicle?
Mm-hmm.
A comparable vehicle, what that would run?
Try.
I mean, it'd be good to have a, a figure because, you know, given inflation, bro, I know that's going to be ninety five days.
Yes.
I don't know, I'd just like to give us something to compare it to.
Mm-hmm. And how long it was take to get it?
To get it?
That's a million dollar question.
Yeah. Very good point.
Because if we, they're saying, or fifty five thousand dollars cash, it's in Monterey in a couple of weeks.
If you wrote the check tonight, you'd probably have it tomorrow.
Whereas if we, even if you ordered that other vehicle, we'd have to wait for it and we'd probably have to pay for repairs on the existing vehicle to make it to there?
Well, I do know, um, Agar Mart did same similar situation, um, they didn't have a chief, they called the chief's vehicle over there. The select board wanted the chief to have a vehicle, so they bought him a F one fifty pickup truck out of the ARCA funds. And that was the last vehicle of that style on the lot that he bought, so. Things are not promising out there and they don't know when the next round's coming back.
And you have a hard time actually transporting someone in that vehicle because it's not covered?
Correct, there isn't, they have a kind of a different.
They have a different system, right, okay.
Different system, yes.
Yeah, but just, it would be good to have, like, if we were trying to ride a buy one, it would take us this long and it would run us this much. Because then, you know, we can bake the best possible case of, what are our options, well, buy a new one, pay to fix the old one and hope it makes it through or do this.
Okay, I will try and get my best in my spare time to get that all put together.
Um, option two would be write up what you're looking for so that I can make calls.
Okay.
But I have to know what to ask for. Otherwise, I'm like, I just need a car, that's not going to be helpful.
Yep. Okay.
So, I mean, you can literally just shoot me an email with, here's the specs of what we would need, it needs to have at least whatever, this horsepower or seat this many people or be this size, whatever those issues are. So that I know what to ask for.
I will, we'll get something done.
I'm good at making phone calls.
So I know you're. Trying to come up with a timeline, but this, I'm not pushing, but.
However.
Yeah, however, if it's a, if you're going to say no, I'd rather hear no sooner than, sooner than later, so we, they can move on and sell it to somebody else and. We're not holding them up, that's. So it's, we're, we're first in line for it right now, so I'd say next Wednesday or Thursday.
I'd say to give us till next Tuesday night. And you can tell, tell them that we're meeting with the finance committee on Tuesday night and.
Text them after I leave here, let them know where it's at.
Cool.
And we're working on it, so.
So, and one other question, because one other thing we're working on the finance committee is a capital plan.
Mm-hmm.
And I know, I think, is it Rescue Nine and Engine Seven are both do this upcoming?
Two. I think consecutive years.
Yeah. As of now.
Yes.
Um. Is. If Rescue Nine. Because Rescue Five was old Rescue, right?
It is, yes.
And so if Rescue Nine is going to be replaced, and that would probably really realistically be years. But even if we vote for next May, that would be years before we really see that new vehicle?
Yeah, you're, well, today's timeframe, yeah, you're looking at. Anywhere from a year and a half to three years, depending on who, who you go through, what, how, what you build. It's really a crapshoot out there these days.
Is there any sense of, and so that's a while and it's uncertain and this is a, you know, a vehicle that's more, with more, more of a certain intermediate timeline? Is there any sense of what would come up, Rescue Nine, would it go out to municipal bid, probably, or?
Yes, that would go out to municipal bid and I think. I, we could put it in for a trade in if we wanted to, um, we know, so I'm trying to get ahead of it and meet with some, uh. Talesmen on what things, try to get a preliminary design, what we want and some preliminary estimates, what it's going to cost. He has, the next, this was a month or two ago, he's like, I have a couple of departments that actually this would fit them pretty well. Um, so he says, if you want to trade it in, he says, I can probably give you a pretty good number on it. Is it going to be better than the municipal bid? I don't know. Municipal bid has been bringing some crazy numbers, so.
I mean, the benefit of this is we get, we get all the money, we're not splitting it with the dealer, right?
Um. No, I think they'd give you the whole, they'd be right up front and say, we're going to give you fifty thousand dollars or. But that's, it's your typical trade in.
Yeah, well, usually if you trade in your car, you get public value, but they turn around and sell some more than that, whereas at municipal bid, you're asking for the highest bid directly, so.
True, yes.
You don't have to worry about the dealer taking that.
Yeah.
Um.
So the, the Suburban could also go on municipal bid and. What Ben's saying going on municipal bid, I think, could get some pretty fair money for that, uh, Suburban.
It's in really good shape. Which is, given that it's twenty years old and only has fourteen mi, thousand miles on it, I have more than that for sure.
The Tahoe, yeah, but.
The Tahoe Expedition, that's.
Not the Expedition, yes.
That's what I meant by the Expedition.
Well, yes.
Oh, the Expedition, right, I was like.
Yeah, it's beautiful.
No, I didn't mean that, I keep confusing them. It's not like you're going to make it. Okay. Okay. What, um, did you talk about replacing Rescue Nine and the timelines for that, what kind of, what kind of vehicle is that, it's not, it's not the same kind of class of vehicle, right?
It is not same class of vehicle, there's no transport capabilities with that vehicle.
Okay.
Two responders, try to keep it small, so we can get in these small places, um, the new one. Probably going to put a pump on it, a little bit of water, due to some of the houses that are being built in some really bad spots that we can't get.
Get to.
Vehicles to, yeah.
Right.
Um, so trying to look into that crystal ball of. That craziness, so, so these private roads are, we're going to get down to, yeah. So yes, if that went out to town meeting next year, then. We're probably looking at, I'd say an average of two years to get up, so I don't see things picking up anytime soon.
Does the town need to consider zoning rules or laws concerning? Emergency vehicle access, uh, like weight limits, et cetera, on us? Is that something we should be including in the master plan?
It definitely wouldn't hurt to start discussing that, um. A lot of issues that we run into is the roads are not, uh, wide enough. The brush is over growing, so here you have a half million or a million dollar fire truck driving down the road, but. The brush is scratching up and, um. Some of my guys are nice enough to spend the time and buff it out. Couple times a year, um, but. Yes, there is a bunch of things that we could definitely improve of these private roads. And we, we, every time we go down to these places, we, we push on to cut your brush, get your nine one one signs up. Try to improve your road, I guess, because it's only helping that, it's helping us and it's helping them by us getting there quicker and not damaging our vehicles. So. That would be good going forward.
Okay, thank you, and, uh, we will, we have a joint meeting with the finance committee on Tuesday.
Okay.
And then we have our next, our, our Wednesday meeting. We need to, kind of unrelatedly, but we're looking at, Southern Berkshire has a separate ARCA request.
Yes.
Just for their new ambulance and we're looking at their audit. And I guess we'll get back to next week with, you know, whether it's yes or no, or we need some time.
Okay.
Uh, Mickey, you have?
I just have a question for Sean, um. In the normal spectrum of things, if this vehicle hadn't come up, when would this Suburban have been on the, on the war?
Um, it wasn't actually in the war at this point, um. It was just a vehicle that's been blended back into, to, direct where it's stored is, but, uh. Assist with responders getting to the scene and back and forth.
It really wasn't in the.
It wasn't in the shuffle of things, no, um, it was coming, um. And with our new shift program and its success. We, that's kind of brought that vehicle right, right into a front line piece again. We've gone from, uh, when we started shift program, I'm guessing, but I think we got around eight thousand miles on it, eighty, eighty five hundred miles. And in two years with the shift program we put on.
And just been riding around.
We've just been riding around Birmingham, yeah. But call line is going up, um. And to get a chief officer or a officer on the scene quicker and in front of our apparatus, it's kind of becoming a key piece and not using our own personal vehicles for multiple. Liability issues, we don't have lights, sirens, radios, I mean, we could, but town's just going to buck up. Ten thousand dollars per vehicle to start. Loading my truck up with stuff to be a chief's vehicle, I don't. I don't like that on my own vehicle, but yeah.
I just didn't know where, I just didn't know where that, the big picture was.
So it's, yeah, it's good when you add it in, it never was there, but now that things are really, it's showing that we need that vehicle, so. That's where we're at.
Uh, Ellen Coburn.
Were you saying that the vehicle that doesn't start all the time is the am, is the ambulance that?
So we don't have an.
Or is the, I know you don't have an ambulance, but, that's the vehicle you would use for?
So that's. I'll call our chief's vehicle, yes.
For an emergency for help, for help?
That's, yes.
So if this didn't go through, then you would need to pay for the repairs on that vehicle, which would be the starter, the brakes, the brake lining, the tires, the, all the things you listed? And I, I know nothing about cars, okay, so, I'm just asking. My, my impression of this discussion is that it would be a really good deal to get this ambulance, this used ambulance, am I correct? You feel, you feel strong.
Yes. Ambulance is not the right word for it, but.
Whatever the word is, I'm sorry.
Um.
The vehicle.
Yes, it's, it's a very wise, this, can we go different options and buy brand new and wait? Yes, we can, but, it's all in the timeframe of, right now, it's.
It's telling you to laugh in a way, right, this was amazing coincidence that it happened at this time.
I got a good opportunity, yes. Exactly.
And, and you feel very stormy that this would be a good option?
I do, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. So, yeah, well, we, oh, one last question. If it, if, if it, um, do you do an oil change or? How do you do oil changes if it takes five years for five thousand mi- do you like wait till five thousand miles?
So generally, that vehicle, we've been trying to get it done a year, but, yes, because the general rule fund is five thousand miles or once a year.
Oh, is, okay, I was just curious.
So, it's changing a little bit, but, yes.
Well, they're, are they going to seventy-five hundred for the newer synthetic oils?
Some of them are ten thousand, yeah, yeah.
I wouldn't wanna risk my engine on it.
Yeah, no.
Okay, yeah, no, it's kind of just, and, and fun, but I'm like, what do you do? Okay, so thank you, and we'll, we'll talk to the finance committee Tuesday, we have a meeting Wednesday. We're considering something else for Southern Berkshire as well, which is of a timely, uh, nature, and so we'll get back to, uh, next week.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nice finding of the deal.
Yes, well, just, pure luck.
Okay, so.
What's up next?
Would we like to continue any discussion generally on ARPA funds, or should we continue on through the agenda?
I think we should continue on through the agenda, I don't, I don't feel like I have anything additional to add, I, I do think, and, I do think we should try to come up with a, a date by which that patient should be in, that aren't time sensitive, obviously, so that we could get everybody's in and make some decisions, but, even if it's only on half. But, so that's what I would put out there for us to think about, unless you have a, you know, I'm always open to other proposals.
Yeah, I think we should get, you could tell, uh, by people who are in presenting proposals tonight, they want some sense of.
Yeah.
You know, what's going on, and I think some of the projects for the playground, for instance, there's so many routes they can go, whether it's adding a little bit more mulch, or fixing a swing, to redo, and anything in between, they probably would like some sense of, um, are we gonna know this year, next year? Uh, we have a lot of flexibility, um, so it'd probably be good, I'll, let's put it on next week's agenda, and we can discuss whether we want one deadline for all the, all the money path, uh, date, and maybe I'll try and come up with a plan, or you can come up with a plan, and then,
either one.
So we can see.
Okay.
All right, so that's that. Discuss installation of audiovisual security device in town hall. I believe the police had allocated.
You asked me to add that? Yeah, I asked you to add that.
Okay.
So, um, and I'm just throwing this out as a possibility, I'm not even sure, I like it, but I still feel compelled to at least bring it up.
Yeah.
Um, that, um, one way to make sure that all conversations that are occurring in the public spaces of the building, um, are recorded, would be to have a recording in the hallway by the offices, so that in the event of, um, a dispute between employees, there would be an audiovisual recording of that dispute, so that it would take out the element of A said, B said.
Yeah, I, I can understand that, that side of it, um.
Just because there are many of them.
It would make, yeah, it, it, I think it would make me and maybe others leery of, I mean, clearly you would only want to act, I mean, really, if you have a security camera, you only wanna access the footage, uh, after something happened, where there's a, like, alleged.
Issue.
Robbery or something, right, and, and, uh, I don't know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't come into town hall to have any conversations, I guess, if, if there was such a device installed. Um, you know, you, you always try and say, as a public official, anything that you would feel comfortable saying, you know, all the time, but sometimes you have to have discussions, um, that are in confidence, right, uh, uncertain, uncertain editors.
I, like I said, I'm not even sure I'd like the idea, I'm just raising it as one possibility.
I know the, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I.
Mickey?
I would be very leery of having something like that, I was in a situation at one point where there was something going on within the business, and somebody put a recorder underneath my desk, and I happened to see it. So I knew it was there, and, and I would make sure that if there was anything gonna be said, we either went out on the deck, or I said, I'd go like this, and it would turn off the light, now I'm in darkness, but we could talk, because it turned off the, it was the same electrical outlet that turned off the recorder. Uh, it, it's just a very uncomfortable thing to live with, it really is, it's, I, I don't know, kind of nasty, like, but, not because I just threw that, and it was a very bad time for me, that, uh, you know, I was just put in a bad situation, and, and, uh, it's not, it's not nice, it really isn't, you should be able to, you know, even just, if you made a personal comment to somebody, you know, I don't know, you just, it's, it's just not nice.
Ellen?
I agree with Mickey, I think it's Big Brother's watching you, I think, yeah, terrible idea, frankly. I would be shocked if I learned that other town halls have something like that, but perhaps they do, and before we would do anything like that, I would wanna find out what, whether this is a practice that towns do, to me, it sounds really bad.
And I, I do know one thing, is that the police have money from town meeting to install video security footage outside of the building? Is that, are they moving forward on that?
They would can't do it until July first.
Gotcha. And, I was curious, because then when I saw this on the agenda, I was also curious, are they going to have audio as well?
I don't, I just think so, I have the quote in my office.
Usually it's just a camera? Yeah, I'd be curious, you know, I would, you know, for the same reason, I feel like video footage is probably sufficient. Um.
I think it's just video, because you have to also let people know if they're being.
Audio.
Audio recorded.
In the state, in the state of Massachusetts.
It's two part concern.
Yeah.
Right, and, and if you have an audio recording, you have to put up a sign that says that, you know, you're being recorded, like, you can't do it secretly, which, that was actually violated.
Oh, well, this was a long time ago, and it probably wasn't, but, yeah, right.
Right.
I, but, you know, I, I saw it, I thought, what is this?
And like I said, I, it, it wasn't that I think that's a particularly good idea.
Yeah.
Um, I think it, you know, I, I feel like, since I have to say this in open meeting, I feel uncomfortable talking to the clerk, as of this moment. Right, I am, I am not willing to have an unrecorded conversation with the clerk.
With what?
With the town clerk.
Oh, with the clerk, okay.
Correct, because I am concerned that if I do, it will be, um, misrepresented, substantively misrepresented, and I will be accused of harassment, which, prior to the conversation I had with her, just after I was elected, I would never have said, but I now feel that way. Right, I, I feel like I've swept under the wire, but, um, if I feel like that after that conversation, I'm concerned that other people may also feel like that, and I, I was the one, you know, Steve opposed the recording of these meetings, and I felt like I would rather have it recorded, because even if I make a mistake, I should be called on it. And if I'm accused of something I can do, there's reporting.
And this is different.
Yes, it is different, I, I agree with you.
This is, that's right, this is a, this is, I think.
Public meeting, I absolutely, it is.
So, and, and, and I think, Susan, um, what, uh, the feeling that you're getting at is not, uh, is, I think it's, uh, uh, unfortunately, um, we've discussed many, many times in our meetings before about, um, how the people have not felt comfortable in, in town hall for, for, for a number of reasons, um, in the past. I don't even wanna put a timeline on it.
Right.
Because that could invite arguments.
And my point was, and it's not just me.
Yeah, and, and, uh, it's an environment, I think it's an environment that needs to be changed, which is not an easy thing to do. And I think coming up with different ideas on how to do it are good.
But I, but I think everyone here kind of feels like this is not a good one.
I'm not so. Yeah, I, I don't think, I don't think this is it, but it's, but, but, uh, it certainly is the primary responsibility of this board to make an environment in town hall where people feel, uh, comfortable and safe, right? And, that is not something that people have felt. So, if we continue to think up creative ways anyways to, to make this town hall, you know, that kind of a place, I think that's a, a, a good thing to do. I mean, I think, like I said, I think it's really the most important thing that we're doing with this select board.
Excuse me, may I just say a little?
Um, Ellen Coburn.
I just wanna say quickly, um, I think we need to be careful about saying people have not been comfortable in town hall, some people have said that. There's a lot of people in this town who are very comfortable coming, and I haven't, I haven't been involved in any of this until the last couple of years, and now I have a very large list of townspeople that are very too, and that I hear from. And there are many, many, many people in town who are very comfortable coming in here, um, so, although I know that there are some people who have expressed feelings like that, we do need to be careful, I think, in discussing the town by saying people have not been comfortable, because what people? How many people, which people, that is a really important distinction that I think we need to make.
Well, fair, Ellen, but, this is, you know, Susan's on the select board, and I'm on the select board, and there's a number of employees, um, on, coming from all different perspectives, right, who have expressed the same thing, that they don't, you know, for what, for a variety of reasons, don't feel comfortable, safe, they feel threatened by different parts, different people, different parts of the environment. Um, and these are people who are, you know, deeply involved, and so, I'm not saying, I don't care about the citizens, but, you know, we have, we have to, uh, we have to, we have to make this a, a, a safe and comfortable workplace, and, uh.
And maybe the HR person will have some suggestions that are familiar with them from their work that completely, yeah, I'm not a HR person, so I don't, I'm not saying I have best suggestions.
Yeah.
Um.
All right, so I think, you know, while this individual idea may not be the, the, the way forward, uh, I think, you know, like I said, I think it's headed in the right, trying to solve the rate, the rate, uh, trying to move in the right direction. Um, so now we move on to county administrator, all right, I'm starting off with shared human resources director update. Melissa.
Happy to report that Sophia has accepted the offer, and we'll be starting on July fifth. So, I'm, I'm, she's gonna need a little bit of time just to get settled, but she, um, did mention that, you know, she'll want to meet with everybody, see what the town's goals are, and each of the towns, and, and go from there, so. Uh, as soon as she gets settled, I will schedule you guys to meet.
Do the other, do you have a sense of what the immediate goals of the, of the town are?
That's come up several times, uh, handbooks have been number one, except for Barrington, because they just redid this.
Yeah.
Um, evaluations, number two, and, um, making sure that personnel files are correct and contain what they're supposed to, and those have been the top three items for.
So everyone's kind of on the same page with this?
Yes.
Okay. That, that's good, actually, because that gives her a consistent platform.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, that's good. Uh, thank, thank you to everyone involved in getting that. Human Resources Director hired, good, thank you, good update. Right, moving on to recommendation to extend tree cutting contract.
Yes, um, Jim Hunt, who I believe is on, if you have any questions, is recommending that we extend the, um, tree pruning and removal contract for another year, which we are allowed under the uh, invitation to bed that we put out there, we can extend our contract for two additional one-year periods, and this will be the second one. He has mentioned that prices are going up on fuel and stuff, and that's one of the reasons that we are recommending locking in, because there is no fuel surcharge currently on our contract.
Okay. I have no, I have no, uh, questions we're allowed to extend it.
What are you? What are we paying for?
Uh, I can get you the contract, it's based on what kind of service we have.
Okay, so it's a per job.
Yeah, like, I, Jim might be able to answer better, but I think, like, an all-day thing is thirty-five hundred dollars.
It's a per job thing, but there's a set amount, right.
Right.
Is this someone, is this someone that?
Just, was it company?
No, I know John Field Tree Service, John W. Field Tree Service, um, is this someone that reports, or, I know it's a contract, and they contracted out, but, is Jim, do they report to Jim, the tree warden, both, neither, both?
Depending on what the, who's calling for the job, like, I know Miles has a bunch of stuff coming up, so I'll probably work directly with Miles, um, but Jim also.
Like, if somebody comes down across the road or whatever, okay.
I think Jim unmuted, if he wants to speak.
You there, Jim?
We can't, we can't hear you if you're trying to speak. Okay, well, I hope, if there, if there is anything, please follow up with us. Um, if, so, and they each have their own budget, I guess, right? Because there's the specific tree warden budget, and there's, but because we have contracted John Field, he does all of any of that, those jobs, unless he says for whatever reason, he can't do it or something? Okay. All right, yeah, I would motion to extend the tree pruning and removal contract with John W. Field Tree Service through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, as, you know, recommended by Jim Hunt and Melissa Hough.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, Rebecca, are you trying to speak?
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, you're just on here. Okay, um, so we have a seconded motion, and we will vote, Susan?
Yes.
Justin, yes, the motion carries, and we will sign it clean copy.
Yeah.
After the meeting.
Okay.
Office assistant job description, um, so this was the, the money, I believe in the neighborhood of seventeen or eighteen thousand dollars.
I believe it was eight, wasn't it?
Oh, sorry, that was the old, yeah, I think.
Yeah, the original proposal was seventeen.
Um, for nine hours a week.
Correct.
And, this is the draft job description for the office assistant position. Do you have any questions?
My only question, other opportunities for that, so, at one point, we had talked about someone that was going to be sort of the board secretary for some of these other, the planning board, finance may, parks may. That's, uh, the second last bullet. Right, um, so other, would other office duties include, transcribe them in it, so they would be recording it, and then the person would transcribe it? The person would not be going to be.
No, they could go to the meeting, uh, we're gonna have to figure this out, I mean, nine hours a week is really a lot.
Either way.
It's not much, which is why I was asking, that, that was my concern, that nine hours wasn't gonna actually cover all those duties.
Well, I think, and, like, park commission, I think they've generally been meeting once a month, right?
Right.
But finance committee during budget season might be meeting two or more times a week.
Yeah, yeah.
Um.
Planning board meets twice a month.
Planning board meets twice, twice a month. Um, so. I guess, and so here's the other thing, to um planning board, well, actually, all three of those are elected. Um boards, committee, commission. Um but obviously, we can share a resource between the appointed. Branch of government and the elected. I just. That's the only problem I would ever foresee is like, well, we need our minutes done. You know, and the finance committee and the finance committee doesn't work under the select board and the town administrator, they're just.
Except.
Elected, but we, this position has already been vetted through what the budget process.
Right, and I've I've had conversations with the planning board, finance committee, and parks commission. I don't foresee any issue.
Yeah.
I mean, the problem would only arise if they were competing for that person's time and the time was limited, but. Then, well, I mean, that we only got nine hours, so we'll have to find a way to work it out. I don't I don't have a particular plan in that regard, but. It would be something to think about in advance of it actually occurring, but it may turn out not to be as that big an issue, I don't know.
So I guess if you guys are okay with this, my next thing would be to come up with a kind of mock schedule, that is going to be.
Yeah, well, I think if you can somehow incorporate. I don't know how you incorporate, because finance committee, you know, might go weeks, months without meeting in the summer and the fall, you know better than anybody. Um and then all of a sudden they start meeting, does that person shift gears and write all their minutes? Or will the finance committee understand, okay, during budget season, you have to have one of your own people? I don't know. It's not, I don't think it's an easy thing to figure out.
Um should we think about drafting a letter that we send to all the committees involved, just saying? So now that we have this person, but they're only, we're about to have this person, but it's only going to be, you know, it's only nine hours a week. Um we have to think about how their time is gonna be divided, um and there may be competition for their services. Um and do each of you have any thoughts as to um during critical? Times of the year where some of the committees may be meeting more often, um how would you suggest the person's time be allocated to you?
Yeah, I think, Melissa, when you're doing the schedule, can you just be, and I imagine you will be, because I think they already gave estimates when we were budgeting.
Yeah, I mean, the planning board needs ten hours a month and the finance committee, I think, was a couple hours a month. Um the building commission needs a couple hours a month.
So.
How much did the finance committee say?
I believe they said a couple hours a month, but that, you know, that's during, on an average.
Right.
And then you gotta remember, this is also backup for me, so I I I think, let me try to figure out a schedule first and, alright.
Alright, is this something that we need to approve formally?
I think you should, just to show your support.
My only thing would be, and I see it listed differently everywhere, and I don't even really know what it's supposed to do, because now people are saying parks and recreation. And I don't think it's parks and recreation. I think it's park commission.
I think it's a bylaws.
But I don't know if it's parks commission or park commission, because it's listed sometimes differently on the ballots and it's.
So on our bylaws, it's park commissioners.
So would that be park, would that translate to park commission?
I think so. I think so.
Or parks commission?
Okay.
I.
Because we have more than one park.
It says the town voted to elect a board of park commissioners.
With an S.
Park.
Parks, no S.
Park with no S.
With no S.
Missioners, no with an S.
No S.
No S.
This is just something that I wanna get off my chest and get.
I I would agree.
So I will change that, I will change it to park.
Yeah.
Commission.
Well, and this is by by far the least of my concern.
Right.
Because I've seen recently park and recreation, so.
Right.
Anyway.
Well, okay.
That's my only.
Happily, I think we all know what it's referring to.
Can you volunteer of some of these services you're talking about, or does it have to be a paid person?
So each, these are all elected board, the these three boards, committees, commissions that we're speaking of are all elected. And they'd be, eh, you know, if they wanted to, they could do their own minutes and set their own agendas, which is what currently happens. Um but I think during the budget process like last year and for years now, actually, some of them have had money set aside. Uh for individual, and some of them have had, I know planning board had someone uh drafting their minutes. Um so. Yes, it could be a volunteer on one of the elected boards. There's, I believe Mickey does the minutes for the elected library board trustees.
Right, there's 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 secretary, it's an elected position, I mean.
But you'd have to be on the board to be the volunteers, wouldn't I? Could could the outside or say, I really type fast, could I help you? It's a lot.
Yeah.
I mean, you could, because like the finance committee has been, it's been difficult, because there's only three of them and most of the time it's only been two of them there. So Michelle's been trying to do the minutes at the same time she's doing the meeting and and that's difficult, so having a an extra person. To do it and, you know, like they could be volunteered, why not?
If you.
I would suggest.
If you find anyone, send them.
Well, I I would be able to volunteer sometimes. I mean, it would depend on how many hours and what and whether it has, you know, if it's gonna be in person, then. Am I here and then all that, but I would think it would only be me. I bet there'd be other people also who would be willing to volunteer. So it's just a thought.
Yeah.
Where are you gonna post it?
That.
In all, all the right places.
Every. All the right places, okay.
But let me get the hours first, because I don't wanna post the job, but I don't know what the schedule is.
Gotcha. No problem.
Okay, so I I would motion to approve this job description for the office assistant, with the only change being change parks committee to park commission. And otherwise as drafted.
Second. Second.
Any further discussion from the board or the public? Uh let's call a vote, Susan.
Yes.
Justin, yes, and the motion carries and the job description for the office assistant is approved. Uh May KP Law Bill, so. I can tackle this, I guess. It it reads weird. It looks like the town meeting and the general legal services were charged an hourly rate.
Mm-hmm.
But they weren't. Or at least if you add up. Let me do it right here, just to, I'll check before I say something. I've I've checked before, but if you add up seven sixty-seven. And fifty-four cents for town meeting.
Mm-hmm.
And six forty-nine forty-six. For general legal services, you get one thousand four hundred and seventeen dollars, which times twelve is our seventeen thousand, seventeen thousand and four dollars in that. That's just around anything.
Fourteen seventeen, right?
Yeah, which is supposed to be our gen, which is supposed to be our monthly retainer agreement, so.
Suspiciously close to that number.
I know, it's the same number.
It it is very odd.
So I think there's nothing to this, I mean, there's nothing to, I mean, I think.
There's nothing you can test besides this peculiarity.
Yeah, well, I'm not, I think when they write R, actually. Um.
What is R? Oh, like general legal services, R, R retainer, gotcha.
Yeah, which means retainer, so. Um I don't, and then and then outside of the retainer would be. Five hundred and sixty-seven dollars, which is two point seven hours for the green investigation report and. Uh eighty-nine seventy-five in accumulated dispersments at cost, reproduction of documents, express mail, special postage, toll calls, and online research. Um so the only, the only question here is, we are five hundred and sixty-seven dollars above the. Uh monthly retain or agreement. And so how do we pay that? Are we spent down in litigation fees?
No, I just wanted to make sure that you're approving that to come out of there.
Yeah, and I it looks, it's the darnedest thing, because it looks like they're charging us hourly, but. Let me check one number real quick. Two ninety-five. Twenty-one divided by. It, so you know what it is, is however they do this bill. Because when you divide the the numbers on the rate, like how much they're charging us for a service divided by the hourly, you don't get the hourly rate, you just get some. Obscure number. What, you get one ninety-six point eight, which was not the hourly agreement. So I think all it is, is they took the retainer agreement. Charged it for us for anything that fell under the retainer agreement.
Right.
And then said that the hourly rate was. If they had charged us hourly for all of those hours.
I mean, the truth is, if we, if they hadn't itemized the R things.
Yeah.
They would have just charged us the monthly retainer.
Yeah.
And then tacked on the great investigation.
Yeah, so it would have been, would have been. So the question is, are we, yeah, so I don't think I have any concerns with it as far as. We accumulated some hourly uh lawyer fees, which now we're running completely on hourly outside of the retainer, and we paid for the ones for the month before. So we're all set. I mean, I'm all set to pay it.
Yeah.
The question is just where it's coming. Do you need any guidance on that, Melissa?
Yeah, I just want you to, that you're approving it and I I'll take it out of the legal expenses.
Yeah.
Just be aware that we did say that we were gonna have enough to pay Jeremiah for, so there may need to be a transfer.
Yeah.
For his.
Gotcha.
How much is what to do?
Would you ask him those questions?
Sorry, I'm sorry.
I can get you that before the end.
So I would, I would motion to pay the additional five hundred and sixty-seven for the green report and eighty-nine seventy-five for these various. Costs. Um out of litigation fees account.
Okay, second.
Any further discussion? Susan?
Yes.
Justin, yes, motion carries. Internal transfers to be made.
Sorry, one, two, three, four, five of them that were all approved by the finance committee last night. Um do you want to do them individually? I'll just tell you what I need and then I'll have you sign them later.
Yeah, and you already sent us photocopies of the of the invoices, um right? But why don't we read them off and then I think we can approve them as a group unless there's a hold on any one of them. So Melissa, please read them, and if anyone has a question on an individual one, we'll put a hold on.
Um one thousand three hundred and twenty-nine dollars and sixty-two cents from snow and ice to the fuel account. Um seventy-seven dollars from snow and ice to the valley galley account. One hundred and eighty-one dollars and eighty-eight cents from snow and ice to fire expenses. Three hundred and ninety dollars from snow and ice to fire equipment and maintenance. And five thousand three hundred and sixteen dollars and eight cents from snow and ice to fire equipment and maintenance.
I do believe I did ask you previously what was left in snow and ice.
Yes, and it was like forty-five thousand dollars.
Which we can't lower, because if we lower, we can't overspend it.
Correct.
Oh, I I, right, totally, and you just never know when you're gonna have it, like yours are very variable.
Yeah.
So I had no problem with having that thing.
I I was just reducing these things.
Yes, not producing, that's for sure.
So I would motion to approve those five internal transfers as read.
Second.
Any further discussion? Susan?
Yes.
Justin, yes, motion carries. Uh the one thing I would ask, Melissa, please, we can, can we please list the account and. And the minutes.
Gotcha.
Chapter ninety request form to sign.
Okay, so I have a new project request um for a wheel loader and stump grinder that Jim would like to purchase. Um if I'm still there and can talk, uh you could explain to me that this will, the machine is one that we've been leasing and this is the buyout price. Um it is on a state contract and the stump grinder is um an additional piece to add to it, which will save us. I think he said five thousand dollars a year um in taking the stumps over to Meadow Farm and um and Lee. So I just, it's just you approving the, the account is already approved and I need you to approve it, then it goes to the state for them to approve it.
And then this is a, comes out of the chapter ninety funds or?
Yes, Ellen, I'm sorry, I should have told you the amount is thirty-five thousand nine hundred and twenty-five. We actually think that's gonna be a little bit lower, because we just made one more payment on there.
Um what is chapter ninety?
Chapter ninety is our state aid reimbursable program. We get about one hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars every year. From the state and we are allowed to use it on road projects, um machinery and equipment that aids in road projects. Um.
And this is the twenty twenty-two monies?
Yeah, well, we've actually accumulated, I believe our balance right now is about six hundred and. Current balance is. Four hundred and thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars.
So you haven't been using it that much, okay?
Right.
They let you accumulate it.
Well, you do, you get to carry it over year by year, you know, if you're saving up for a big project.
Okay.
And. So this is just our step in the process?
Yeah, you you have to sign off on it. The highway app or director of operations has to sign off on the account and showing that you all agree with the project.
And what's the price one more time before we.
Uh thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars.
So I would motion to approve this chapter ninety request for thirty-five thousand dollars, thirty.
Five thousand nine hundred and twenty-five?
Yep, thirty-five, nine, twenty-five.
Yes.
Yes.
Second.
Uh is there any further discussion on this chapter ninety request? There'd be none, I'll call a vote, Susan.
Yes.
Justin, yes, and the motion carries. Number seven, undo this business select board job description. Um so similarly to the office assistant position, uh item number seven.
Yep.
Um I, the one comment that I have on this, we have it currently budgeted for six hours per week. Um the responsibilities as drafted include minutes, agendas, correspondence. Hosting meetings. I think it might make sense for the amount of money that we have available and for the. Just the organizational structure. If we eliminate the second and third bullet points that begin with coordinate and correspond. And just have the responsibilities be prepare and submit the select board draft minutes for each select board meeting. Attend meeting, select board, or in some instances, use video, audio recordings of meetings, draft minutes, record select board meetings and post recordings to the town's YouTube channel. And then I would add at the bottom, I would add. How's it listing?
So bullet, delete bullet two and three.
Yeah, and then I would add additional duties as assigned by the select board. And then we would, we don't have to approve this to make per se, but we would.
Right, I do have one question. Um draft minutes, attending, right, so we, the person wouldn't be posting. The agenda.
Yeah.
Okay, because I was worried about like with only six hours, when would that happen?
Yeah.
Yeah. So they have a meeting.
And correspondence too, usually, usually it's something the select board can write a letter.
Yep. Okay, so the person would come to our meeting, report the meeting, do the minutes, prepare and submit those draft minutes a week and edit them. Um and then whatever else it turns out we want them to do?
Yeah, I mean.
And they have time for.
It's a limited number of hours. I think like. Um we approved a limited, a limited number of hours and. This is probably realistic as to what the position can do and depending on who it is and who the select board is, that position might develop. There's different chairs in the select board, there's different compositions of select boards, they require different needs, they offer different strengths. And uh.
Yeah.
That position might change, but. Uh this is how I have it.
Okay.
Drafted, I just put the changes on there. If you if you agree with that, you can motion to approve it as changed.
I'm motion to approve it as changed.
I will second that motion. Any further discussion? Call a comment. Okay, let's call a vote, Susan.
Yes.
Justin, yes, and the select board secretary job description is approved as amended. Why don't we just initial that, Lewis and me just?
And we are, if I understand it, thinking this is a separate person from the town administrator assistant, correct?
Yes.
We have the time, at the moment, yes. We actually did have that discussion on the last day of budget, I think, and there was some discussion and we ultimately decided to keep it separate. And there was some discussion and we ultimately decided to keep it separate. With some understanding that depending on the circum, as the circumstance evolved, it could be one person. Um, but if you combine them, there's not the option to separate them as much.
So I'll do a, a huff, one and add and just send it to you guys so we can get it out as soon as possible.
Because we could, we could hire as soon as July one if we wanted to, because that's on the fund that are available, but. Okay, great, thank you. So, special event permit request from Emily Sotilly. Building inspector approved on June sixth, fire chief approved on June seventh, police chief approved on June seventh. Um, seems like all of the checks were, or all of the requirements were fulfilled.
I, I particularly like.
Yeah. Proud.
For those of you who haven't seen this, uh, they have a certified crowd management individual that will be on site during this wedding. So, you know, because wedding trucks often get out of town, but just in case.
I think it might also be the groom.
Yay. So the only bit I'm still waiting for is the insurance, um, liability and the, um, tip certificate. But if you want to approve it with the conditions of receiving those.
The what certificate?
The tips, the alcohol serving.
Oh, oh, right, okay.
And they said they are, um, here, what did they write? Alcohol, we, we will not, sorry. The event coordinator will supply the alcohol liability, insurance and tip certificate. So they haven't decided on the catering.
Right.
But they will, and only companies with TIPS certified bartenders will be considered. So it's tips and, and what's the other one, insurance?
And the insurance liability and, uh, okay, so prove, show the. Alcohol liability on an insurance certificate.
Okay.
Worth Monterey, so that's an additional insured.
So we could approve this provisionally subject to both of the.
So I would motion to approve this application for a event conditional upon they're being TIPS certified bartenders and liability insurance received by the town.
Second.
Any further discussion or public comment? There'd be none, I'll call a vote. Susan?
Yes.
Justin, yes, motion carries. Bear Town Mountain phone service intervention update.
Okay, so, um, essentially, the deal is that we, as we already know from Hello coming into town meeting and, uh, coming to town hall during select board meeting and Ms. Coburn, um, there are a number of people on Bear Town Mountain Road that have problems with their landline service intermittently and therefore difficulty accessing 911. It turns out there's actually quite a few people that are subject to this problem. Um, for instance, I talked to Lori Stanton, uh, last week and, I think it's this weekend. Last week, her husband fell in the tub and was unable to call out for more than two hours for help because the landline was not working. Um, I've identified at least five homes and what I was hoping to do, and I think there's a letter in here later, was to, I had, um, Don Clausen, the assessor, um, getting a list of all the mailing addresses of all the homes in, on Bear Town in between Fairview and the forest. So that I could send a letter out basically asking people, um, is this a problem that you have? Um, if, that if it is a problem, can you give me your phone number, your physical address, the frequency with which you believe your phone is out? Um, and if you have had Verizon out, if you have any active ticket numbers, can you give me those? Yeah, I spent about two hours on the phone with Verizon. Um, it involved two different groups. Um, in the end, the tech person I talked with, they were very nice about it. They're aware that this is a problem, the copper lines are not really up to the load that they're carrying, they're old. Verizon doesn't want to replace them. Um, but this is a public safety issue. Um, and we kind of have two simultaneous issues. We've got no fiber up there yet, possibly at least a couple of years before that's gonna happen. Um, we've got no cell service that's reliable up there. And on top of all that, we've got 911 service going out because the landline isn't always working. So, um, I think it will be a bigger stick if instead of each individual calling a Verizon and saying, why, why, why my line doesn't work. Um, if I can say, well, I have X number of residents that are estimating their 911 service is unavailable twenty percent of the time, um, Verizon needs to do something about this problem. It's not an acceptable situation. Um, I can go forward to the DPU, um, the Department of Public Utilities, um, as well as Verizon. But it would, having that information would give me, make me better able to try to apply pressure on them to upgrade that.
Absolutely, yeah.
Um, I also had a conversation with Chief Tryon because there's also an issue up there, as I'm sure you already know, but for those of you who don't, that there is not reliable communications for, um, emergency services up there either. The rate, there's a bunch of spots that have radio blackout. Um, and there's a cell service. So, um, he, um, he is gonna write a letter for me to use to this as well, but he's also going to reach out. There is a, in 2011, where the Vernuz cell tower was under consideration from AT&amp;T. We have some sat maps from their projections that include projections concerning a tower in Bear Town Mountain that shows that that area would have coverage if there was a tower there. And there already is a smaller tower up there on that site. And the question is, can we push to have that tower either altered or increased or whatever in order to allow for better 911 coverage, not just in Monterey, but it actually would serve four towns because it would serve Monterey, Tyrion, Lee and Barrington.
Yeah.
Um, so Chief Tryon's gonna reach out to the other three towns to see if they have an interest in sort of joining us to kind of push for at least having better 911 coverage for EMS services up there as well. So I, I'm taking kind of a two-pronged approach.
Yeah.
Um, but I just wanted to let you know that I was doing this and, um, I would love your feedback on that letter I drafted.
Yeah, I think the, the letter looks good. Um, if you want to have all of the communications on this matter go to you.
I'm, I'm fine.
Um, I'm not opposed to receiving the emails, but if, if you're gonna be compiling this, um.
And if I'm the one that's gonna try to, you know, it probably makes more sense for it to be one or the other.
Yeah.
If you wanna take it, I'll go for it, but I'm willing to.
No, I think you, you want, if you wanna take the ball and run with it, that's good.
And that way it just funnels them down.
Yeah, and then you can report back. I'd be happy to sign on to the letter if you feel like that makes it.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Official. And then I would just say, please, in, send this information to select board, you know, member Susan Cooper. Just so that is clear, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
So that it's clear.
Sure, select board member Susan.
That they're just, that they just funnel it all through you.
Right.
And then if you want to add a signature on it, I, I mean, I think it looks good. It's, I think it's a really good idea to, so that you have data and you don't just say, you know, people.
Exactly.
So I think it's good. Um, if you wanted.
So go ahead, let's put your name on there.
I'm gonna add it right now while you're talking.
Okay, there we go. So just after it says, um, in the last paragraph, please send this information. It should say, information to the select board, to, instead of the select board, to select board member Susan Cooper, comma, either by U.S. postal mail or by email, if you're not subscribed below.
Okay. And then if you wanna add a signature on it for me.
Yeah.
Then I'd be, I think that's a good idea.
Okay, um, if we're gonna mail this out, I think it's about thirty houses. I'll have to count because some of them are trusts that I'm not sure would be relevant.
Yeah.
Um, but how are we gonna pay for the mailing?
You have postage money.
Okay, all right.
Just have, um, have Don do labels, he can print them all off on labels.
Okay.
And I have, um, envelopes that are here for you to stand.
Okay. Um, I will have him print out on labels and then I'll come in and we'll go over them because I think, like I said, there's no reason to mail them to something that's, we're not gonna get an answer from. So we can just leave those out.
Ellen Coburn, do you have another comment?
Yeah, uh, uh, thank you so much for what you're doing with the landline issue. It's been thirty years, frankly, that we've been dealing with Verizon, but I never thought about getting other homes and all that. And frankly, I was younger and didn't worry about health issues that much. Now I'm very worried about health issues and 911. And my focus right now is on the 911, um, connectivity, which I know would take a long time for Verizon to finally agree to fix the landline and all that. So there is an agency now since 2019 with the state of Massachusetts called the 911, uh, it's through this Mass, the state of Massachusetts 911 department or something like that. And I called them and I, I tried, I tried three times to text and as you know, Susan, I was able to text you. But three times I tried texting 911, which Justin, you had given me those helpful, uh, addresses and I, that's, I contacted them. But they said it was supposed to work, it didn't work, three times, three separate times. And so I contacted this agency and I got an email back, my phone is starting me out of power. Oh, I can't read it now, I ran out of power. But basically I got an email back today, yesterday, maybe it was, um, from the woman at this 911 agency asking me for my cell number and my provider, Verizon Wireless. And that they were going to be following up on why my particular text is not working to what is supposed to be a statewide system for 911 texting. They made a big fuss about it in 2019, they announced that the whole state had coverage now for texting. I thought it was because my phone just doesn't text, but I'm testing, I tested with you.
She tested me and, she was on her landline and texted me and I like pretty much instantaneously got it, so I have.
And so did my friend in New Jersey. So my, my phone is working for texting numbers, phone numbers, but for some reason it's not working for the.
Was it iMessaging to Susan?
No, no, you're supposed to, I'm an Android and I go to my, I go to my text number and instead of writing four one three whatever, I write 911. And then in the text, they told me, say test, say three fifty Bear Town Road, you know.
Okay.
And then, um, I called them after I texted, I heard nothing, 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 and they said, we never got it. And then they said, maybe it went to North Hampton, maybe it went to, I tried all these different numbers, nobody got it. So there's a company, there's a, they said they're gonna tap, contact their, their provider for texting and it's not, I don't know the name of the satellite, whatever it is.
But it sounds like they're at least trying to.
So they responded to me, so that's good.
Yeah.
But, but I wanted to say that in contacting all these other people and not just asking about, um, a landline, but maybe also asking if, you know, if they are interested in finding out. Because again, if it's not just me contacting this 911 agency, but it's a bunch of other people.
So add to this, uh, have you tried not texting 911?
You could mention that, that I've started, however you wanna do it, but, uh, uh, will, will you?
Is it worth putting it on?
You know, do you have a cellphone, are you interested in a 911 texting option? Because that would be this week, next week, instead of how many months it's gonna take Verizon to respond.
Yeah, I, I think this is good. If it's not working for Ellen, I imagine it's kind of not working for others, but it's certainly something to include in your ultimate letter to Verizon, you know? That the 911 text is not working?
Although it's, it's unclear, since we don't know enough, let's wait and see if they find out, if they can figure out why Ellen's system isn't working.
Well, I would ask other people to test it. What I would love to see is if you could write to, uh, if somehow, I mean, I can ask Chris Sanders and, and Louise and the people I know, but there's other houses and maybe, maybe they haven't even tried that yet.
And they may well not have, but once I have their, their phone numbers, I can call them and ask them.
Right, I'm happy to make calls, by the way, if you, you know, if it's a question of calling people.
The other thing that, um, and I, I don't know how workable this system is, but the other thought I had, if this doesn't get worked out is, we have, I know that if the line isn't currently available, but we do have a town-owned cellphone. So if Ellen can text me on, you know, Friswall, and a thought I had was if we had a town cellphone that was a dedicated line that was sitting in the firehouse.
And my, my only concern is that, and I, I don't fully understand the whole system, but there's a reason everything goes to a central dispatch, right? And, uh, I don't know with liability and such like that, like what happened. Those dispatchers are trained, right? And you've seen.
Very true.
Times where they've made mistakes. The firefighters are not necessarily, you know, it seems common sense, someone says they need help, you go to their house. But there's a little bit more going on.
No, it's a question, excuse me, it's a question of asking them to contact 911 for me. All I need is somebody that I can call at three in the morning. I mean, I could text you at three in the morning, but you know what? I need to know that there's a person on call for, for EMT kind of things, who I can, I can text and say.
It's like a relays system.
Help, please call 911 for me.
No, sure, I just, I think it's good to think of common sense, practical ways to help rectify your emergency situation. I also don't wanna put anyone in town in jeopardy, um, because we promised to do something that we could fulfill, you know?
No, it would have to be a person who's already on call, is my feeling. If there is somebody, and I don't know if this is the case, but does Monterey have someone every night on call for emergencies?
There generally is, but they generally, to my understanding, respond to being toned out by Berkshire County Dispatch. And they're, they don't respond to, uh, text messages or private phone calls. At this time, I'm not saying it's not something worth looking into, but I do see potential problems, oh, you know?
I, I understand and I wouldn't want them to respond to me by coming to my house.
I, I, I fully understand.
I would want them to just call the 911.
You're looking for a relays system.
I'm just looking for somebody who has that thing on.
Let's see what they say and if they, if possibly they're gonna fix this system for you, I don't know, but.
Yeah, let's see, let's see.
Let's give them at least the overview.
Right now my landline is working, it was out for a week, again, just this past week, but it wasn't out for me to call out.
Only calling.
It was only then I wasn't getting calls, but I didn't know it, I kept getting voicemail. And I thought, oh, I missed that call, where was it? Now I realize.
So.
Okay.
I would motion to approve this letter as amended. Uh, we just add a signature on it for me and to, we leave the, for select, every select board member, Susan Cooper.
Second.
Any further discussion, public comment? Could be none. Susan?
Yes.
Justin, yes, and the motion carries, and we will sign a clean copy of that after meeting. Um, so right now we just finished at number nine of new business. I would make a proposal, it being eight, almost eight fifteen, I mean, we started at five thirty. I would make a proposal, if that's all right with you, Susan, to table items number ten, eleven, twelve A, twelve C, and thirteen, which is all the minutes.
We already did twelve B.
We already did twelve B.
Twelve C, twelve, so wait, wait.
The only.
Twelve A, B and C, is that what you're saying?
The only one that I would take care of, because I think we can do it quickly. I still have to draft the notes to thank you notes to the children and I have to look at the letter to the town clerk and I want some time to review it, but I think we could do twelve B and then deal with comments and questions from the public and adjourn, if that's all right with you. And then we would move all of those items to old business next week.
What about minutes?
I, I haven't gotten to the minutes. My, it's my, uh, my apologies, but I haven't.
Are there any that are becoming posted there?
No, we are not. So next week would be the fifteenth, we have thirty days, even the week after that would be the twenty-second. So we still have two weeks on the latest set, on the oldest set.
Um, so I, I would not like to see the town clerk letter I go pass next week.
Yeah, I think, and based on our policy of doing it at the next meeting or the very next one after that, I'm, I have the same, you know, feeling, we'll deal with it next week.
Do you know what I didn't, I just realized? I got a email from Terry asking regarding approval of vacation, but I don't see that on this agenda.
No, and usually, usually, we talked about this last year, vacation, there is a form to fill out for vacation, but then usually we do not do vacation requests at open meeting.
Okay.
If that's something you would like to change.
I don't know that I need to do it at open meeting, I just assumed it was open meeting, so I didn't realize.
Yeah, no, okay, so I actually raised the concern last year because I thought that it should be at open meeting. And then the idea that. And then the idea that sometimes employees, you know, it's kinda private if they have medical leave or this or that.
Right.
Uh, it doesn't need to be aired out to the whole public, uh, you know, unnecessarily. Of course, it's a public document probably. And may, maybe things would need to be redacted, but we don't need unnecessarily aired out. Now, one thing that I think is done in other towns is we could say, you know, so-and-so has requested vacation. Now, the other thing is this may all change with the HR director. So I don't know if we want to go changing things right now, but that's kind of all my thoughts, is usually it's been done with a form in the mailbox.
So I do have the form in the mailbox. I can get it for you to look at tonight. Do you remind me when the, when the vacation days were?
I think it was the 10th next week and.
The 10th was for the graduation and.
And it's not so much approving the vacation time, it's approving whether you're going to allow her to make up time.
Right.
So that one, I feel like we need to discuss and we can't discuss it without it being you. You could discuss it with her and I could discuss it with her, but we can't discuss.
Yeah, and, and I mean, that was my initial concern with the vacation policies sheets being done outside of open meeting, was you could discuss it with the employee requesting vacation. I could, and I know this may invite some things other than the typical vacation policy. That being said, it's just how it's been done. And when I brought it up last year, we decided for any number of reasons to continue doing it that way. If you feel like we should change it or change it for this circumstance.
So I, I have no objection to the vacation, but I would like to at least have a discussion regarding what our policy is on making up hours. And I think it's a bigger discussion, because I remember in the meetings over the last year or so, right, it came up that like part-time workers making up hours and it, I like, you know, when the dump is closed on a holiday, it'll sometimes open another day, so those hours are made up, but you talked, I remember you basically talked about the library workers.
I wanna make a disclaimer first of all, too, because I don't want to put myself in a position where I'd be committing an ethics violation. So when I started discussing the part-time employee vacation time off, I it did not, both my parents are part-time employees of the town. My father primarily is uh the library director and my mother is the community center coordinator. So I can't do anything that would affect their financial position.
Mm-hmm.
And I tried and I worked around it so that it would, the policies that I was doing would affect them, but if you were to read abstractly into it by not including that in the policy.
Right, right.
I don't wanna put myself in any hot water.
So we might need to wait, can we have a third board member
Yeah.
to have that discussion as a general thing. But I knew that it has been on the agenda, because I, it is kind of an odd thing and I think there are times, my general feeling about this topic is that there are times when we should allow people to make up hours. Um, and there may be times when it is appropriate. I'm not really sure how that should work and maybe that should be also rolled into the whole HR discussion, which might take like individuals out of it, at least in part. But in this particular case, um, I'm also wondering, and I, I wrote an email to Terry asking about this question and have not yet received a response, um, basically asking, um, as I, I seem to recall that when the assist, clerk assistant job was set up, part of the idea was that that person was gonna train towards being a clerk, because Terry at the time had said that she was looking forward at some point to retiring. And it seems like a lot of clerks train by being assistant clerks. That's a pretty common thing. I've talked to a bunch of clerks and that is not an uncommon situation at all. So, the other week when she was in here and I asked, what can your assistant clerk do? The only thing she said that the assistant clerk, that she listed the assistant clerk could do by themsel- by himself is to post um agendas. And I, I thought that seemed like a very small list, given that we're, he's working like six hours a week on average. Um, but it occurs to me, if, if the clerk can't be there, why can't the assistant clerk be there? So that the hours are kept and the office is open and people can come if they need to.
Yeah.
That was my thought. Like, I don't understand why the assistant clerk can't fill those out.
Yeah, I think it's certainly a discu-, you know, a discussion that could be had. We should probably put it on, on, on next week's agenda or future agenda if we wanna really get into it. My, the one thing that I know is that that was done at some point in time and then it was not done because.
Which was done just by.
Uh, the assistant clerk had kept office hours when the clerk was not around, to my understanding, but that's a, I mean, it's a long.
And now it's not done because.
Discussion. There was some thing that happened and I can't even recall, and I'm sure that different people are gonna say different things, but uh I mean, it's certainly, it's certainly a discussion, I mean, uh, but.
Since the clerk doesn't seem to want to answer my request or permission, perhaps we could inquire of the clerk, why that doesn't work?
Why the.
I would like to know why the assist, since we hired an assistant clerk for the purpose of opening the office if the clerk isn't there and believe me, if anyone is, you know, what happens if something happens to their clerk? Let the record show, she's pointing to her injured foot. Like, I, I wouldn't have been able to go to work for over a month, right? Literally. So if the point of hiring an assistant clerk is to have backup for the clerk.
I mean, and you'd probably hear different things too, um. As to the history, I mean, it's, it, uh, that is certainly something you'll find, everyone speaking to your recording of audio conversations, you'll hear, you'll hear different things about what, why, what happened and why it happened and um, well, I guess what we really need to focus on is how we want to move forward, you know, considering history and so.
Exactly, that, but whatever happened in the past, happened in the past. It might inform decisions we make now. We might wanna make a different decision now, but at the very least, I would like to have a clear understanding of why that can't work before I make a decision as to whether I wish it to work.
Gotcha.
Right, and, and, but I can't make that with no information and it's present, I have none.
Yeah. Okay, so can we deal with 12B? Do you feel comfortable dealing with that?
Oh, yeah, let's do it.
Mary, Mary K. Jordan, yes. Mary K. Jordan is asking if they can borrow the 150th anniversary quote from town hall, move it to the Knox, no, they, she said Knox Gallery. Is it, it's not called the Knox Gallery. It's the Monterey, it's the library art exhibit.
Right.
We, yeah, she said Knox Gallery.
I assume.
Because can they borrow the 150th quote to put at the library and moreover, can they keep the 150th quote at the library?
And I, I see no reason why not. Probably more people will see it then.
So I will, if there's no objection, I will reach out to Mary K. Jordan and tell her that they are welcome to move the quote permanently.
Okay.
Okay. Um, are we okay with moving all of the 10, 11, 12A, 12C, 13 to the beginning of next week's agenda?
I am, um, especially, I, and I would like to add to that a follow-up on, um, the what you wish to call it, replacement hours or, um, for the, for the town clerk concerning the vaca- the second vacation. I also, by the way, um, had a concern about the clerk's altered hours being very late. Right, because he wants to start, instead of starting at noon, she wants to start at 2, but then instead of ending at 8, she wants to go till 10:00 P.M. Um, and I, I, I think that's a little strange, like I, I, not that I've never worked till 10:00 P.M., right?
We're, we're headed in that direction.
Right. In other words, shut up soon, but, okay, um, but I do think that's, um.
You can't get a lot of work done if those out.
You can, but you also can't get much public.
Yeah, but you gotta hold it at 2:00 and then afterwards you could get in.
Fair, okay. So, but I, I did think that was an unusual request.
So you wanna, we'll put on the agenda for next week?
That would be great.
Okay. Are there any other comments and questions from the public before we adjourn?
I just, I just wanna mention that somebody from town actually called me today about the, about that 2 to 10. And I said, no, I was at the meeting. I remember it was 12 to 8. She said, no, I've been told it's 2 to 10. And that was from the clerk to her, so.
It might have been because she wanted to come in that day.
Uh, it, it was, it was gonna be for Friday. She told me that for Friday it was going to be, she, she's this, this person has decided to come in tomorrow from 4 to 8 because she, she thought those hours were bizarre that it was so late. And so it was just one person, but I think that's very odd to have hours from 2 to 10 myself. I mean, not the 2 part, but the 10, you know, 8 to 10.
Any other comments and questions from the public?
I just wanna thank you for writing letters to the children who took us.
Yes, great.
And I can tell you we'll come next week, so you'll be able to thank me for next week.
Well, I know, but you're still doing it. You're still gonna do it. Our young niece thought of doing it. And that was a great idea to give little kids.
Okay.
And before we adjourn, do I have a permission to call Ms. Burrow?
Yes, I think we clarified that and uh Melissa's gonna reach out.
I mentioned it was a factor for the mission, she had to do it twice.
Yeah, public, about redacting public, public records, executive sessions, which is something that KP was gonna do, so it's good that we're doing it.
And. Also about. And also about scheduling. We have to figure out how to schedule the walk, talking.
The listening tour.
I'll give you some dates where I know most people are here. And are you thinking an evening or for her to come? Are you thinking like a mix, like maybe she comes from like 2 to 6 or she gets here?
I don't know how many hours, what's she tracking? She says I'm gonna meet with all these.
I know four hours and two.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like a long, in short time, how many?
How many, well, here's a question. When we come up with a list of the people, the, she listed a few positions particularly.
Have you met some of them?
Maybe we should figure out how many people that is and say we have X, if there's X number of people, how long do you think you need?
I'll, I'll follow up with her. My sense is also she's probably gonna ask, well, who do you want me to?
Right.
Right, so we'll discuss that. I, I don't, it's, would be nice to get it done soon and later, but I don't think it's a rush.
And are we paying for the transport?
I can ask, because that would be interesting, because that'd probably eat up a month, right?
I, exactly, that, that's my issue. So it might, like, I know it's important to have it in person, but the listening tour is free?
I'll ask her.
I was gonna say, because that's what I was concerned about for four hours.
I'll, I will ask her. Um, is there a motion to adjourn?
Yes, there's a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Yes.
Uh, Susan?
Yes.
Justin, yes, motion carries, meeting adjourned.
Mr. Chair.